Eat as much sugar. I might have to share it. Well, thanks, everyone. Appreciate your patience as we had our executive session to get started. And I think we apologize due to the nature of how we have to announce this, we have to put a start time and that's probably confusing because that's the start time of our executive session and last week we had a town hall which was for the public that started at six. So, sorry about that. We'll try to be clear as we can with the posting to let you know when executive sessions are versus open meetings. That being said, we pulled the order earlier and we took a roll call. Now we're at all seven of us. I think, are we good to move ahead with into consent agenda? We have four items in consent agenda. Any questions by the trustees?
I move to approve the consent agenda?
I'll second.
One question. It was a small one on the minutes. I think it was just, I think the moratorium was just, if you count the days up, we were just off by one and it expired. Expires one day earlier than it says it does.
Yeah, and actually, we, no, that's a good point because we had said five weeks, but then we kind of had, there was a reason and I can't remember what is that week, the 22nd, which is actually the Wednesday following followed, but I wonder if we have to...
Well, because we didn't want it to expire on the Tuesday that we were meeting.
Right, right. And that was it. So maybe it has to be written as 36.
Yeah, 2/21 is the day if you do 35 days from when this was published. It's a small thing.
Yeah, so 36 days is, I think how we wrote it in the... We definitely wrote February 22nd.
Yep. The minutes look good.
So your motion to, are you making a...
Making a friendly amendment. I'll accept it.
But will you clarify for the record what the amendment is? Because there was a little discussion.
To have it expire on the 21st instead of the 22nd in the minute.
Okay.
But we definitely said the 22nd in the meeting, so...
That big a deal. It's just one day. It's inconsistent.
Right. It said, it said five weeks.
Five weeks, which is not long.
So the ordinance you passed says that it's going to, and that was put in codified, says February 22nd. So therefore, the minutes do reflect the ordinance that we passed.
Yeah, I do remember that, yeah. Well, the ordinance I signed and edited or reviewed before I signed.
Right. The final codified ordinance has February 22nd.
Any other, anyone notice anything else on the consent agenda?
Oh, it looks good. So let's make the motion again.
Did someone second it, right? No?
Got your motion. I didn't hear a second. I heard the friendly amendment.
Okay, go ahead. I started the second and Tom, so I stopped because I wanted to hear what Tom had to say.
Yeah, one syllable of the second.
Go for it.
I motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll second.
Mayor Proton Mahon?
Yes.
Trusty Kumsizma?
Yes.
Trusty Severs?
Yes.
Mayor Billy?
Yes.
Trusty Sterling?
Yes.
Trusty Corvalon?
Yes.
Thank you. Oh, did we, oh, yes. Trusty Mountain, excuse me? Trusty Mountain, I'm taking a roll call for the consent agenda. I'm sorry I skipped you, but I'm looking for your vote.
Yeah, sorry. Somebody muted me. I had to do the star six thing. Yes. Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, no worries.
Consent agenda, which wants to say welcome. Welcome, John, and welcome, Leah. Oh, yes, I wondered about this here, but we can do that. Is that, in this new post-COVID world, do we do oaths virtually? Okay. Should I stand up there or am I better off here and I can read the... Okay, John, we, I know we swore in the other day, but I'd like, we'd like to swear in again here in front of a bigger audience. So I'll just, I'll go line by line. You can read it too on page 28. I, John Mountain, do solemnly affirm...
I, John Mountain, do solemnly affirm...
That I will support and uphold the Constitution of the United States?
That I will support and uphold the Constitution of the United States?
The Constitution and laws of the State of Colorado?
The Constitution and the laws of the State of the State of Colorado?
And the ordinances of the Town of Netherland?
And the ordinance of the Town of Netherland?
And that I will faithfully and to the best of my skill and ability...
And that I will faithfully and to the best of my skill and ability?
Perform the duties of the office of the Board of Trustees?
Perform the duties of the office of the Board of Trustees?
Of the Town of Netherland upon which I'm about to enter.
Of the Town of Netherland upon which I'm about to enter.
Thanks, John.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Thank you for that reminder, Miranda. So we have public comments on non-agenda items. We've been lucky. We have quite a few comments this meeting. There's four on the police, the police department issue or situation. There's four on the annexation, one on egress, Big Spring zebra, egress, and one on decommissioning Boulder County's number one polluter. So those comments are written and in the packet. And at this point, we will open up for a public comment on non-agenda items. And if you're in the room, we'll start with folks in the room. Go ahead, Kayla.
Kayla Evans, 1250 Eldora Road. It's nice to be back. I've had pneumonia, if anybody wondered.
Sorry.
And I'm still having a little oxygen up here problems, but I'm on the mend like crazy. As I was sitting home for a month and a half, which is really hard for me, watching the news, the national news, the local news, hearing this and all of this, compiling all these things in my brain, I started thinking about the process of the annexation that you guys are dealing with in this process. I have, I have so much energy. I've been working on this project for 10 years. And I would like to come to a different perspective, which is instead of looking at people who are opposing this as adversarial, I need to try and convince them that this is a good thing for the community. I think a lot of the people that are opposing are, there's a nimby aspect to it, which is sad. I look at it, we need this so bad. I'm doing something that hopefully will benefit the town, not just today, which is obviously a need, but when we look at our town five, 10, 20, 50 years in the future, if we don't do this, it scares me to think about the ramifications that are going to happen in that time period. I already think that we're seeing things happening just in the last couple of years. We're not going to have a bank now. We don't have newspapers at the grocery store or at the Quickie Mart anymore. We don't have a BNF market anymore. We don't, go down the list of all the things that have left our community. And it's very sad to me. And I start thinking, why are these things leaving? Why are we losing these services and these things that we all enjoy in our community? And a lot of it has to do with, can they hire people to do the work? And that, the biggest problem is nobody can afford to live up here that isn't already here. I do think that a lot of the people that are opposing my project, if you drew a line and said, oh, this is the cutoff date that if nothing was built before this date, you can't live here. Why are we drawing the line right now? There's a need. There is a chronic need. I'm trying as best I can to be as, working with all the people that have questions or have opposition. If you can bring me an opposition to this that is really cogent, other than we actually hike on the property that you're using, I will listen to it. I will try to amend it. Mr. Blotnick, you dear little person, all of the buildings that are in the Timmy Town, excuse me, the McMillan subdivision are closer than anything we're going to be building to him. So what is his opposition? Do people just on, don't want trees cut because they don't cut trees cut? I understand that, but also understand that for me, and I know I'm over my time and I so apologize and I will do this really quick, the bigger portion of this is, everyone loves Arapahoe Ranch and they think it's wonderful wildlife. It's great. It's all these things, but it doesn't come without a cost. And the cost is taxes, fencing, roads repair, bridge repair, those things. That takes a lot of money to do that. And I don't think people realize that, that I also look at this development as a way for my family to make sure that that rest of that property is maintained and preserved for this area. So I hope as the trustees move forward, that you look at the bigger picture and that you don't get distracted by noise that is self-serving and noise that is not looking at the greater good for the majority of the people in this community. So I thank you for letting me go over. I really do want to work with the town. I want this project to go through for so many reasons. Billy, you got the daycare center up here. Talk to Karen, ask her how much waiting list there is for kids in that. They don't have a building that can supply the demand that they have. Do we want our community to grow in a healthy way? Or do we want it to grow in a way that only people that have a whole lot of money or that have been here for 50 years are going to be able to stay here? We need fresh blood. We're a pond. If you don't have fresh water, you become stagnant. And we, this town deserves better than that. And I so apologize for going over. Thank you for being patient with me. And it's nice to see everybody again. So, thank you.
Thanks, Kayla. Budge on the mend. Feeling better. And just so you know, as a non, what do you call it, agenda item, we have a tentatively scheduled town hall on annexation on March 21st at 6:00. More details as we get into that. We were talking today about, talking about annexation and also opening up for some positive ideas of what people would start wanting to, if we were to talk about an IGA. So just want to get that in people's calendars. Thank you. Are there other public comments on non-agenda items?
Do you have Sarah online who is interested?
Hi, Sarah. Go ahead, please. Identify yourself and your relationship to Ned. You got three minutes.
Hey. Sorry. Thank you so much for having me tonight. My name is Sarah Larrang. And I co-founded a community group called Good Neighbors of Lyons. And we are the ones diligently working to decommission Boulder County's number one polluter, which is the Semex Lyons Cement Plant. I'm not sure if you had the opportunity to read the draft letter I sent with supporting, some supporting information, but I'll try to keep this as brief as possible. So I'll just shoot straight to the headline, which is that I'm hoping to earn your endorsement of this letter that we'll be sending the Boulder County Commissioners at the end of this week. The letter simply asks our commissioners to enforce the Boulder County Land Use Code by issuing a letter of termination to Semex Lyons regarding their non-conforming or grandfathered status. Boulder County just opened an investigation into the termination events impacting that non-conforming status. So this letter, more than anything, is to ask the commissioners to make this investigation a priority. We've been in communication with one commissioner in particular, and she indicated that widespread county support is the best way for the county to allocate resources and make this the priority that we would like it to be. If it's any comfort, I've already received formal endorsements of this letter from the mayors and some additional elected officials from Lyons, Jamestown, Boulder, Longmont, Lafayette, Superior, Lewisville, and Bloomfield. For background, Semex Lyons is the number one polluter in the county, emitting about 357,000 tons of CO2 per year, and they make up about 7% of the entire county's emissions. It's a 54-year-old coal-fired plant permitted with 1960s air quality standards that produces serious environmental concerns that go far beyond their greenhouse gas emissions. So with the recent closure of their adjacent Dow Flats Mine, Semex made numerous operational changes, one of which is that they're now chucking in 100% of their raw materials needed to operate the plant. This has resulted in an additional 80 or more 35-ton trucks delivering material every day. This roughly doubles historical truck traffic into Semex. So this very material change to the plant's operation is what gives Boulder County the opportunity and the obligation to terminate their non-conforming status. So, and that requires Semex to apply for a special use permit. So I really appreciate your consideration of this. I said this in the letter to the commissioners, but I'll say it again for you here tonight because I wholeheartedly believe it. Taking this step to decommission Boulder County's number one polluter might be the single most impactful thing any of us will ever have the opportunity to do in our lifetimes to fight climate change. Their annual greenhouse gas emissions are equal to the annual emissions of about 30,000 people, and they have every intention of hanging around indefinitely if we left them. So if you'd be willing to add your names as endorsers, I can add your names individually, or the towns of Lyons and Jamestown opted to vote and endorse as a unified governing body. So I would be incredibly grateful for either, if you'd be willing to do that. Thank you so much for your time and consideration.
Thanks, Sarah, for your letter and your comment to give us, to personalize it more and we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Any other public comments on non-agenda items? Hearing none, I would go ahead and move us into discussion items. Our first discussion item is 6.1, Community Planning and Developing Land Use Tools Presentation. We have Bob, and Bob, I'm going to say your name wrong. Widner, I wanted to say, but I know it's wrong.
It's close. It's Widener.
Widener, okay. A long guy. Okay, it's Bob Widener. And Bob is here. He works with our attorney, Madsen, and he's here to talk to us about community planning and developing land use tools. So...
Thank you, Mayor.
Go ahead. And actually, real quick, what we'll do is Bob will talk, and we may ask Bob some questions, clarifying questions. We'll open up for public comment and then talk. We'll talk more.
All right. Well, thank you for inviting me to come up. I've been here once before and I had a good time. And I've come up and got to see more of the community, drive around.
Real quick, there's a lot of people online and I have this thing touching my lips, but sorry.
I'll delete this thing if it helps. How's that? So again, thank you for inviting me to come up. Again, my name's Bob Widener. I'm actually... Again, my name's Bob Widener, I'm actually a partner of Jennifer Mattson, your town attorney. We work together on a daily basis in my firm, and, and she couldn't make it here tonight because she's working on some other project that took her away, but then I was available, so it worked out famously for me to comment up. Just by way of background, so that people know where I'm coming from, besides being a lawyer, I am a, kind of a, if you will, a land use geek. I have spent 34 years of my life in representing municipal government exclusively, and I've represented communities all across the state, and one county, believe it or not, on long-term basis, and a great deal of the work that I've done has been in land use. The drafting of codes, drafting of comp plans, the drafting of regulations are all things that I had started my career 34 years ago to do, and I still do today, even though I'd like to retire, at least my wife tells me I should. The, I am also an adjunct professor at CU Law School, teaching land use law, which I also love to do, and I will hopefully continue to do in the future. So my background, and have a master's degree in all this other stuff I could tell you about, but just understand the fact that I, I live and breathe land use, and what I'm going to share with you tonight are some generalized comments about the importance of land use, kind of how the power plays out, what's important to a community regardless of where it is in Colorado, because quite frankly, I'll tell you that the, the regulations that govern Nederland are the same regulations with regard to planning that govern many, many, many other communities in Colorado, far, far larger than this community, and far smaller than this community. So the regulations are pretty much the same, so what I'm speaking to are the comments that I've given across the state to a variety of different communities about land use. When we talk about land use, we talk in terms of the fact that we are talking about planning and regulation, two aspects, two components of what makes up land use. And land use and the way in which governments conduct their land use practices and policies is probably the most impactful thing that a community can do. There is no other thing that you'll do as a governing body that will impact your citizens more than what you pull out of the ground. And that is going to impact them in the way in which they obtain their services, whether that to travel to get those services, how they park their cars, whether they need their cars, whether the, the community's walkable, how sustainable is the community, well, how would the property value is going to be increased or impacted, impacted by land use policies and practices? How safe is your community from a standpoint of traffic is going to be a big part of land use and the health of the community, as far as what you provide to them, which will advance the health and the safety and the welfare of the community by resource allocation and making sure that they have what they need for healthy lives. This is all part of land use, of planning and regulation. And when we talk about land use in communities, one of the things we want to focus upon is the need to have a plan and a need to regulate your, to, to implement your plan because of the idea that communities can be of one of two types. They can be intentional communities or accidental communities. And what I mean by that is that an intentional community is one in which has thought about its future, thought about it in such detail that they've regulated for that, for that future, and what comes out of that regulation, long-term, is a planned community that works, that has what they need, because they gave it some great deal of thought. Those are intentional communities, and more and more communities are going in this direction of having the tools prepared, as I'm going to talk about tonight, as opposed to being accidental, which are those communities that have not, don't give much thought to what the future's going to hold for them, they don't think about the future, they don't regulate for the future, and quite frankly, they get what they planned for, which is nothing. They end up with, with a hodgepodge type of development that doesn't coordinate very well together, and they are, by accident, a community. It is always better, in my view, to be an intentional community, one that has thought about your future and done the right things. What those right things are, is using the power that's available to a community, and in using and implementing that power through regulations. The first and most important thing that you can do as a community is to plan, is to think about what you want to be when you grow up, is how I like to phrase it. You are going to someday, 20, 25, 30 years ago, sit on your front porch and look out at your community, and you, I would hope, will say, this place is better because of what we implemented, what we did, and it has accomplished the goals that we set out for, as opposed to, never saw that coming and it doesn't work. That's not where you want to be. You want to think about where you're going, just like a family thinks about their vacation. No one gets in a car and starts driving with the idea that that's a vacation. They have a point in, of interest in mind when they get in the car and they set off on their, on their, on their path. They make sure they're adequately funded, and they have the right snacks in the car, and they drive to some point that they're planning to go to. It is no different for a community. You must sit down and plan out your future, and in fact, Colorado law requires you to do some planning through what's called a comprehensive or master plan. It is, planning by its nature is what we call legislative, which means it's entirely discretionary for your community. The people who hold the control to put on paper what it is, the plan, what the plan is, is the majority of the governing body, no one else, that's who has the power. As representatives of the citizens who elected you, since you have to plan by law, you need to put on a piece of paper the ideas that your community's going to, to, to shoot for, to venture for. That plan is changeable, and it will change and can change over time as new governing bodies come on, or even as governing bodies change. But understand this, the power of planning is huge. The power of planning is entirely up to the governing body, a majority of the governing body, and it can be elaborate, it can be detailed, or it can be a little less than that, but it's all up to you on what you want to be when you grow up. The way in which you adopt typically a comp plan is through citizen input, property owner input, a great deal of governing body input, and the Planning Commission has a specific role under state law to assist in the preparation of that plan. But ultimately, it has to be approved by a majority of the governing body. And once that plan's done, you have a roadmap, large picture roadmap, of what you want to be when you grow up. And that's an incredibly critically important document, because absent that document, you cannot draft regulations because there's no reason for you to regulate, you have no purpose, you have not, have not decided what we want to be when we grow up, so why, how can you put regulations on a piece of paper? The regulations, which are the next step in planning, or in, in land use after planning, are, is critically important to look back at your comprehensive plan, back at the policies of your community, and make sure those regulations will implement what it is you want to be when you grow up. They work in concert both legally and just practically. The, the comp plan is of critical importance. What is nice about Netherlands is that they, you've done a great deal of work that's related to comp planning. You have a 2013 updated comp plan, now, yes, it's now 10 years old, but that's not unusual for communities to have somewhat outdated comp plans. You also have a fairly detailed set of design standards, which articulate a way in which you want development to look in your community, and you have the 2030 plan, the 2020 comments that I've read through. You have more than many small communities, which is great. And what you need to do is take those documents and focus upon them, and make sure they, they articulate what you see your future being. If they don't, change them, draft some new ones, add to them, delete some stuff, but get to a point where you can look at your comp plan and say, this, this, these documents define what we want to be when we grow up, and we like it. Then the next step, which is critically important, is the regulations. The regulations will implement that vision you just approved. They will be regulations that tell owners, landowners, developers, everyone, what it is they need to do to their land to serve the comp plan, to, to implement the vision of the comp plan, and basically provide the services, provide the outcome that's going to best serve your community, to provide the needed services, to make sure that transportation and traffic works, that you have the right kind of buildings, that it's walkable, that it's sustainable, whatever it is that you want, will be implemented by your regulations from your comp plan. We commonly call these regulations the tools in the toolbox, you've probably heard that phrase, and it truly is a toolbox, and the toolbox is huge. The number of tools you can put in that toolbox would, is staggering, in their scope, in the detail, and the kinds of regulations that you can adopt. The most common ones that we all know about are zoning and subdivision and site planning. Those are the most common ones, and that's what most communities have. They have, they have these written down on a piece of paper, but there are a host of others, other regulations, that can implement the goals and vision of your comp plan. You will need those to truly implement a comp plan, because building height and setbacks and zoning alone does not make a community. It's all more accidental, because people will develop the rights, the tall house, the white house, the broad house, and they'll put the uses in it, and they're done. That's all they've got to do, nothing else. No coordination on traffic, no particular service interests, nothing, they just do the basics. No community wants to do just the basics, so they always have more regulations than just those basics. And again, what those regulations are, are numerous, I want, I wouldn't go through all of them tonight for you, but I will tell you that you break your comp, comp plan down, and you will find what falls out of your comp plan will be a bunch of regulations that make those things work. Now, one of the most important things about the regulations is you have to write them down. What many communities do is they have a comp plan, they have a vision for their future, and they say, we're just going to tell the landowners, that's what we want to do. Look at the comp plan, we want you to do it this way, because it will implement the comp plan. What the law tells us is if it's not written down, you can't use it. So regulations are critically important to have in place and to have in detail, so that they will implement your comp plan. Otherwise, you have nothing. You have a nice, pretty picture of what the future should be without any means to accomplish it. The regulations allow you to accomplish it, so you must write them down. Now, one of the things that Netherlands has recently kind of come up against is this idea of a moratorium. And this is a power that is inherent in all communities who do planning across the United States, and it is a, is a condoned, approved practice for land use for all communities, even endorsed by the US Supreme Court. And a moratorium is intended to provide an opportunity for a community to do exactly what we're talking about, planning and regulating. It gives you essentially a timeout, so that individuals won't submit plans to you for development that don't, that does not comport with what you believe your comp plan should do for the future. So what you want to do through a moratorium is typically tell people, timeout for a while, keep your plans to yourself, we're going to look on our comp plan, update it, and implement the comp plan through some regulations, and then we'll open the door back up, and you'll bring in your application, and that way, what you will bring out of the ground will meet the needs of the community as well as your own, because hopefully you participated in, in the process of this regulation and, and comp planning. And then there, then, following that moratorium's expiration, you have regulations in place that make your vision come true. The problem with not doing moratoriums is that when people submit their application, they get processed on your current regulations. And if your current regulations don't implement your vision, you're going to get development that doesn't implement your vision, and you're going to live with that long-term, because once the developer, once the property owner develops their property, they have a protected property right that you can't interfere with, once it's out of the ground, unless you pay them compensation. And that's a very difficult issue to have. So you want to make sure that what comes out of the ground implements what you want. Now, one of the things that people always lose a little hair over is the fact that, oh my goodness, you do this planning, you do these regulations, and the next thing I know, my, my use of my property is going to be illegal, and you're going to come scrape it off. No. This is the concept of what's called non-conforming use, or non-conforming buildings, or non-conforming lots. If you created a business, you created a building, you created a lot, you created a use, that's legal, and then later it becomes, we, we'll call it illegal, because the regulations changed, now that building, that lot, or that use doesn't comport with what we put on, in the regulations, that use, that building, that lot continues to exist. Nothing changes. The owner continues to operate what's on the ground as long as they want to, until there's certain activities that happen, like they decide to redevelop the site, they bring the property into conformance with the regulations, or it burns down substantially, 50% or more is the usual standard, then they have to rebuild in accordance with the regulations. But they get to continue on, there shouldn't be, if you will, fear associated with a moratorium and the change of regulations, because if it's on the ground, it gets to stay. If it changes, it's brought into conformance. That's the basic scheme, and what I wanted to present to you tonight, with the understanding that all of the power to do what I'm talking about lies with you, with the governing body. A majority of the governing body makes these decisions. And so it's incumbent upon you to look to the future, to make sure that you put on paper what you want the future of this community to be, after consulting with the, with the, with the public, and with the owners, and whoever else you want to consult with, and make sure that when you sit on your porch 25 years from now, you look back on your community and say, that's what I envisioned, that's what we wanted to come out of the ground, and you're pleased with it, and it serves the needs of the community.
Thanks, Bob, appreciate it. Any, any questions from the trustees?
Doing comp plans takes a long time. What would you suggest is maybe a tool that we have that, you know, can allow us to update some of the regulations, but if time is of an essence, right, not going through the, the full comp plan process?
The, the best, obviously, the best comp plan is one that's done comprehensively for the entire community, that's, that goes without saying, that's why they call it comprehensive planning. But there are means by which, especially when you already have some of the work done, to take smaller step, to take a more focused step. If there's a particular area of your community that you're very interested, to make sure we don't lose opportunity in that area, the best way to do it is what we call sub-area planning, in which you break out a piece of your community and focus on it quickly, efficiently, citizen input, and you decide what it is we want to see out of this area. It does require you take a little bit larger view and look how it might coordinate with the surrounding properties, but you laser focus in, and you create, make sure your comp plan addresses that area and says what it is you want to see that come out of the ground in that particular sub-area. And then you move to the next area, and the next area, and the next area. At least that gives you a running start, because there are probably portions of your community, like there are in every community, that you're pretty happy with what's there, and you're fine with it. You don't need to make any major changes, but there are always one or two areas within a community that there's an opportunity to be achieved, and absent planning and absent regulations, that opportunity will go by the wayside.
Any other questions from the trustees, John, John and Tanya? Any questions right now? We'll come back to.
I'm good.
Public comment.
Yeah, I don't have anything at this time, Billy, thank you.
I think, I think I'll, I think I'm good right now before, before public comment, but, anyone from the public want to make a comment on, on this presentation? Hi, everyone, sorry, we had a little, you lost us there, but anyone online have a public comment regarding Bob Widener's presentation we just listened in to?
Kathleen Chippai has her hand raised, and my guess is she'll have to call in.
Hey, Kathleen, you, you are ready for your comment, so you can either start talking or call in, whatever you need to do.
Hello?
Yeah, can hear you.
Kathleen Chippai, 32-year resident, 20-year business owner. Yeah, I had a question, because I'm, I'm, I don't believe our goal has changed in our comp plan since 94, 2013, and that was to build up the inner part of town, the downtown, and I'm just curious as to why, after someone has applied, and we just talked about grandfathering, you did, that we're considering doing something, and the CBD, any different than what we had? We agreed that infill was the best for our community, and that annexation and sprawl was not a good idea. And so, I guess I'm just curious as to why this presentation is being given at this time, and. And I'm not cool with moratoriums after people had filed applications. And we have a number of people who just bought, spent a lot of money in this community in the central business district, and, you know, when they bought, they had the opportunity to read the language of the comp plans and the code. And it's pretty clear what can be done. So, I'm a little concerned about taking away people's use by right for what things are right now. So, I don't know if Bill can speak to that, but...
We're not going to do a back-and-forth with Bob on this. And, you know, the next discussion item gets more specific.
Okay, yeah, I think it gets way too specific and targets one individual, which is obvious and blatant and disgusting, in my opinion. So, I guess that's...
Why don't you save that for the next item, because you'll have a full three minutes to talk to us directly about that. But do you have anything else regarding just proactive?
All right, well, I don't appreciate this happening the way it's happening. Again, the way it's happening is not a good optic for the community or for land property owners or anybody considering buying. So, once again, optics bad.
Thanks, Kathleen. Are there any other public comments on the presentation we've been hearing about planning and land use? All right, hearing done, we'll come back. And the question before the board is, does the VOT have any questions for Mr. Widener? Questions?
I guess a question could be, what you see the role of emergency ordinances to pass moratoriums in advance of applications being submitted to the town. I want to make that very clear. This is not after application's been submitted, this is in advance.
Almost invariably, ordinances that enact moratoria are emergencies, invariably. The reason why is because the moratorium is put in place to prevent, if you will, the landowner from pulling something out of the ground that's inconsistent with your vision. So, a moratorium is almost invariably enacted to give you time to look at your comp plan, make sure it provides a vision that you have for the community, and then to look at your regulations to make sure they implement the comp plan. And at that time, once you're satisfied that you have the right tools in place, you release the moratorium, and then applications can come in, and they'll be complying with the regulations that you've enacted so that you get out of the ground what the community needs. And the reason why it's an emergency is because you don't want somebody racing to the courthouse, as we call it, racing to the land use department, if you will, to get their application in to thwart the upcoming planning process that's hopefully serving your community. So, you put them in place with emergencies. That's just the nature of moratoriums. I don't think I've ever, I know I have never seen a moratorium that wasn't an emergency ordinance, because there's always a need to hasten the enactment of that so that you can turn your attention to the comp plan and the regulations.
Thank you. And then, just one more question, which is that there's often, I think, some confusion, maybe even consternation, about the comprehensive plan and how it can be used, because we know that it's not a regulatory document. So, if you could maybe give us some advice or some idea as to how that's intended to be used, or how we might revise our comprehensive planning process to be more, let's say, instrumental in the future?
The vast majority of comp plans are appropriately visionary documents that generally describe what you hope the community will be in the future. The vast majority of comp plans are not drafted with sufficient language to be regulatory tools. In other words, they don't say, "You shall build your building this far from the property line." It says things like, "We want to make sure there's adequate space between buildings." That by itself cannot be enforced as a regulation. That is not specific enough to tell the owner how they have to do it. So, that's why regulations implement your comp plan. Is there a means by which your comp plan could be used as a regulatory tool? The courts tell us yes, if your comp plan is drafted in a manner that's very much like a regulation. And most comp plans don't go there. They help, they can help define your objectives, your intent. But by themselves, you rarely find a single sentence in a comp plan that truly is a regulatory tool. And so, to have a comp plan and say, "We like our comp plan, and we're done here. We don't need more," is a recipe for disaster, because you cannot use the comp plan. And it's not binding upon the owner. The owner can tell you, "I like the comp plan, it's pretty. I love picture on page six, but I'm not doing anything that says in there, because it's not a regulation. It's not the law," right? And they'd be correct.
Thank you. Which then, I guess, it would be correct to say that drafting a comprehensive plan is in and of itself a partial process, like it is not a complete process, that you have to then pass regulations that actually implement that comprehensive plan, right? Because I think too frequently, we've done a comprehensive plan and then found that all of our regulations actually come from before that plan was drafted, right? So, there's no way they could be implementing a plan if they were drafted before that plan was written. So, we need to actually pass more regulations in accordance with comprehensive planning.
One of the most important things that you hear, and it's a very good question, a single word, when you look at a regulation, you ask the question, "Why?" The regulation says you must do this, and you ask the question, "Why?" And you should be able to say, "Well, because it is our vision in the community that we will be like this." And if you look at the regulation, it advances, implements that vision. If you ask the question, "Why?" to the regulation, and you say, "I don't know, we just enacted it," that's a very big problem for enforcement of your regulation, because it's not rational. It's not reasonable. It's not based upon any need your community's articulated. So, there's a very tight, close connection between your comp plan and your regulations. There has to be, because your regulations need to be reasonable.
So, yeah, so the comprehensive plan then is a justified legal basis for regulation?
Absolutely. It's critical. It's why the state law requires us to have comp plans, because they want you to think about it before you draft regulations.
Thanks.
So, the work at this point could be reviewing the comprehensive plan, reviewing our code, and updating any vacancies in our code that do not adequately address the comp plan.
Correct. That's absolutely correct.
And that could be performed by your team, perhaps?
Well, it's critical that the team be at least some representation by the governing body, because ultimately, if you don't prove it, you're wasting time.
Of course.
And then, typically, you like to see a citizen component in that group of people who are committed to the future of the community. They don't have particular interests, if you will. So, oftentimes, it's not the best position, or best to put a major property owner who's going to be affected by the comp plan on the team. But you always ask them what they see for the future, and what they see for their property. But the team should be able to be committed, focused, and have the time to quickly look through. And they may well look through it and say, "This is exactly right. We hit a home run in 2013, no changes needed." Great. That conclusion in and of itself is worth every penny of the time that you spent in getting it. It also might be that you look at your comp plan and say, "Ooh, that's not what we feel anymore. We want something different, or we want to tweak something in here." Great. Then amend those provisions, and get those approved, and get them in front of the governing body, get the governing body to bless it, and then start drafting regulations to implement that plan.
I guess I'm just saying, for the sake of, you know, moving forward, let's say, for the hypothetical scenario where we're happy with our 2013 comp plan now. What we're not happy with is the fact that we didn't carry the values and principles of our comp plan into our code sufficiently to enact our comp plan. And that's the only remaining step that we care to implement now, before we left a moratorium. That could be done essentially by an expert such as yourself or Jennifer. And then, they bring back the code recommendations, and if we're happy with it, we could vote to approve that.
That could be one process. Typically, there's a team of people, like a planner with a lawyer, goes around the state, and they do exactly what you're talking about. They brainstorm, they shake the comp plan and say, "What regulations do we need to make that happen?" And they draft them and give them to you. That's usually a team approach by a lawyer and/or a planner. Sometimes planners are experienced enough and done it enough that they could do it on their own without a lawyer. But ultimately, you want to make sure a lawyer looks at it so you're not stepping in something, right? You want to make sure that you can enforce it in the future. And that lawyer can be Jennifer, it can be me, it could be anybody else you want to hire. I'm not saying it has to be your town attorney. Sometimes, communities hire a team that's not their town attorney. It's an outside legal counsel. Not a problem. Doesn't offend anybody if you do that.
But then, if we say we work with a consultant lawyer, planner, to do that, and then we bring it back to that team, so the team being government and citizens.
Very smart.
We bring it back to that team, and then that team really is like the next step.
That's a very good point. It's awesome, it's awesome, often very good, to have that regulatory step go back and be vetted by the people who looked at the comp plan, so they can say, "Thumbs up. Great approach, exactly what we wanted to see." Or, "We want to tweak the regulations. We don't think the regulations go far enough," or "They go too far," to have them buy off on the regulations before they come to you. That's also a very valuable step, to have your citizens group or your team look at the regulations before you get them.
And just to be clear, it is also perfectly reasonable that we approach this in a more piecemeal manner, that is to say, with sub-area planning, right? It's not required that we fully rewrite our comprehensive plan before we make decisions about certain areas in town.
Not at all. And many, many communities do more piecemeal approach, especially when they have a comp plan on the shelf. Sometimes, they pull it off and they say, "This one section needs to be reviewed." There are one, there's one community, and I would never say that you're like this community at all, but the city and county of Denver has a very piecemeal comprehensive plan, because areas of the town, of the city of Denver are very different. And so, they can't do one size fits all, so they have to split it up into packages like that.
Any more questions from the trustees? Tanya, John?
Yeah, I just have a quick question. This is Tanya, mainly from Miranda. Like, can you, where on the town website can somebody find the comprehensive plan? Because I'm on it right now, and I'm looking for it, and it's not obvious.
You can Google it, you'll find, that's how I found it.
So, I believe it's under Community Development, Community Master Plan, Netherlands Comprehensive Plan.
Gotcha. Otherwise, I don't have any other questions. Thank you.
John, do you have any questions right now?
Not at the moment, but thank you.
Any other questions from the trustees?
Well, I guess I have one more question, real quick. Regarding design criteria, we have that whole document, Design Criteria. Would it be recommended also that that same group goes over that document? Because it feels like it's more in detail than the comp plan in terms of the little nitty-gritty details. Wouldn't that be maybe important, too?
The materials you find in the design standards, which for a community like Netherlands is a very big step. It's very sophisticated, not the right word. It's a solid step towards describing in a much more articulate way what you want your community to look like. And so, you know, most planners would look at what you have there and applaud you for having that vision, if you will, to think about how you want your community to look. The design standards need to be adopted by ordinance as a regulation, and probably need to be tweaked or changed somewhat, because much of the language is suggestive and not demanding, not mandatory, not regulatory. It says, "You should do this," as opposed to, "You must." So, those regulations should be reviewed by a group of people to make sure that they articulate your vision, your plan, and are redrafted in a way that are binding.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Bob, any closing thoughts before we move on?
I think what you're asking or what you're looking at is the smart thing to do for any community. I think it's absolutely necessary. And we always talk about looking at a comp plan every five years is the typical standard. You want to pull it off the shelf, not let dust gather on it. To do that is not common. What you see too frequently is comp plans adopted and not looked at for a decade or more. So, it's good to look back. It's because it is a necessary component of our regulatory program. So, you better look at it, because you're supposed to be using it. So, I applaud you for taking those steps. I was happy to come up and talk to you. I do this across the state for a lot of communities. And I'm always invigorated and encouraged the fact that people think about their future, because if you don't do it, it's not going to happen.
Thanks, Bob.
Thank you.
Appreciate it, and thanks for sticking with us the rest of tonight. All right, well, thank you, and we'll move on now to our next discussion item. 6.2 Ordinance for Subdivision Applications in the Central Business District Zone. All right, and so, the same, I'll just preface it and talk through some, and then maybe Tanya. Tanya and I really, what this is, is kind of our intent. How about if I just start there? You know, we started, you know, we put a moratorium in place on January 17th, and really, a lot of it was about looking at inconsistencies between our code and our zoning code and the comp plan and the Division 2030, our most recent Division 2030 documents. And we put that emergency moratorium in place to give us just, you know, a timeout, as we've been talking about, to make sure things are aligned before we proceed. So, out of that, you know, Tanya had some ideas, and really, a lot of what this is, is ideas. Tanya and I were the first authors, you know, we got input from town staff, from our legal, legal really looked this over, and Nicole gave some edits as well. And we just, we have this out here as really kind of ideas and a starting point, so we don't have five weeks to go by without anything happening. We wanted to get going and get something underway. And we're using this really as a discussion item to decide, you know, what it is we want to do to move forward, you know, and make this moratorium something that, you know, is worthwhile for however long it lasts, and gives us something that brings us into more cohesion with those three documents, you know, the code, comp plan, and Division 2030. So, apparently, you know, so I kind of just touched on the first part. Y'all have read it, I'm sure. The purpose of temporary moratorium is to allow town staff, planning commission, maybe the BZA, the Board of Trustees to investigate, review, and analyze potential new town regulations for the CBD zone district that would implement the goals and vision for downtown Netherlands. Currently, lack consolidation is an easy administrative process and with little scrutiny or public input. And so, we just wanted to realize that and decide, you know, bring it, you know, bring this, look at this more and decide, you know, is that how we want it to continue? Or do we want more of a check and more scrutiny? And then, really, Tanya, these are just some of our ideas in this next part. Computer's freaking out here. Okay. Tanya, do you want to talk to some of these? Next point, really, at the bottom of page 63, those bullets, and then into page 63.
Yeah, yeah, so, I'm not looking at it right now, but I just, those are just obviously not in stone, right? This is a discussion. The idea was, after our last meeting, was, there was a lot of speculation as to, "Well, what if this happens and that happens, and it doesn't get built?" Or, "What if it gets consolidated and then sold immediately to a developer, you know, from out of state or something? What if?" And so, the idea was, well, in such a large lot consolidation, which I don't think this would apply to smaller ones, right, two, three, four lots size, but for a large one... ones, right, two, three, four lots size, but for a large one which has the potential to impact town in many different ways, wouldn't it be more useful to, at the time of the application for the applicant to, to bring forward certain design elements, site plan type documents to the planning commission so that what, what they're asking for is not only the law consolidation, but contingent onto the plan that is being shown. And that is just one idea. And I put it out there because of, most of our conversations seem to be circling around the what ifs and the speculations and the not knowing and the fear of turning, you know, half a town into two lots, half the CBD, you know, a fourth of the CBD into two lots. And what are those ramifications if, if there isn't any idea of what's coming next? And how can we have some control over what comes next? So that is why we have the conversation about getting some of these ideas in the design criteria and the comprehensive plan put in zoning. So I guess part of the discussion would be, do we want to move some of these ideas, you know, more into a zoning conversation and a design criteria conversation? And that is how we can control the future of, you know, a quarter of town turned into two lots? Or is it something that could be determined at the time of the application for the two lots? And so those were the ideas, was some kind of timeline for the project with some, you know, some strict guidelines on that to make sure that things happen. Obviously, that people can ask for like extensions, right? Because it's really hard right now to get things done in general. But, I mean, within reason. Those are the ideas between most of those bullet points, if not all of them, besides the obvious ones of where other boards and people can have opinions. And which we do think that's maybe important. At the very least, there should be, this is me speaking, the very least, a law consolidation should probably go to the BOT. And in that period prior, there would be time for public input and comment between the planning commission and BOT meetings. All right. I think I've spoken enough regarding it. If I missed something, let me know.
Got some questions I'd like to have addressed.
Sure. Yeah, go for it.
Okay. So this is called ordinance 835, right? This is what we're talking about. That's what it's proposed. It looks, I wanted to get, I wanted to get two things settled. Timeline of putting this together, intent. And why are we, what, you know, this was sprung on us in the last meeting on January 17th. The document says, written by Jennifer Madsen on behalf of Board of Trustees. Who commissioned this to be written? This is, this is what was in the packet last time.
Okay.
This was, this was just popped in there. And I want to know, this was before you two started working together.
Sure.
Why was this put together? Why, why did this just get thrown on the table and then you two just run with it? Tell, explain to me what's going on here.
That was put on the table as the wording for the emergency moratorium because we saw that we needed a timeout because we saw this, this application that would, you know, which was incomplete and wasn't turned in, was incomplete, you know, that we saw this application as something that would do something in the CBD district that potentially couldn't be undone. And it would go against, well, it would reconcile with the comp plan 2013 and Invision 2030, which talked about division, diversity of businesses, et cetera. So there were things that it just seemed like we need to stop action and put this moratorium in place and give ourselves time to discuss it. So it was brought, it was, yes, I did. It was brought to my attention by the lawyer, and I definitely felt like it was a reasonable thing to bring to the board. And as for timing, the timing was tight on me too. Like, it all came, there was, there was an email sent to all of us at one point.
Yeah, like a week before the meeting.
Not many people responded.
So, Tom.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, the, what we have, what was brought to my attention was the concept of a lot consolidation that would, you know, turn First and Second Street into two lots, possibly happening. And what would be the ramifications with that happening with, in my opinion, without a plan, a next step of why and what's happening next? Because if it's just simply to sell those properties to a developer, we need to make sure that our design criteria and all of our zoning codes or whatnot are strong enough to prevent something really hideous from being put in the middle of our most important valuable land in town.
We were asked to adjudicate on a lot light consolidation. Nothing gets built without going through a complete planning process.
That's, that's in this case.
It is our, is our.
Oh, you're serious.
Is our zoning and our, and our design criteria, it's a lot of should comply with planning, you know, with our comprehensive plan, should look like this, should be like this, but not, there's not a lot of concrete language in our current code to prevent, and I don't want to point fingers at other buildings that have been put in our downtown that are, in my opinion, an eyesore. And I would hate to see another developer of that type of artistic merit come in, you know, I'm not talking about Ron's particular plan. I actually kind of like his particular plan in the sense of the lesser of evils. I think it's quite nice. But that's not, there's some other things that have been built in our downtown that are awful. And, and that much space, I think it behooves us to take a little time to make sure that we have some checks in place, either in the law consolidation process or if we want to kick it into the design criteria and making more, instead of should, must language, to make sure that we have, we're going to have a building built that's going to reflect the values for the future of this town. I don't think we do right now. And that's, that is the concern. Our current code, you know, could just create a box in every square inch of that land without any requirements for, you know, social gathering spaces or anything. These are all just things that we need to have another conversation about as to what we want as design criteria. What is important to the community in a large development? Do we want it just to be one big box? Do we want it to be just like what Ron showed us? You know, if, obviously, if, that's why I had all the specific things, but maybe those things belong somewhere else. But that's our worry. And I don't know if you can change my mind in the sense that we, our coding and our zoning codes is strong enough now to prevent some of the other buildings that have been built in this town from happening again and taking over First and Second Street? Because obviously, they got built once. So anyway, keep asking questions.
So this was put together in fear.
Of unknown, yes.
Yeah.
Because all we have in front of us is a potential for a possibility of a lot consolidation without any other information. There is no, there is no application for a building permit or anything coming through or a site plan, any, anything that binds it to a design or a development.
And I think fear is one word, and others just caution and, and, you know, doing our job to, you know, to, and there was wording that came out, you know, for, I'm not going to find it, the health. Yeah. As elected officials, one of our priorities to be, is to be totally focused on the health, safety, and welfare of the community. And sure, if you want to call it fear, but I think it's also caution, and it's also.
Intentional.
Intention. That's a great word. And it's more, wait, are we here? Is this where we want to go? We can, we can legally do an emergency moratorium to, to give ourselves the time to make that decision. And then once, you know, and with the moratorium, you know, what this is about is trying to get the ball rolling on what we accomplished during the moratorium. But with the moratorium, we give ourselves time to, well, bring the code consistent with what the people want the town to be is one idea, you know, it was the idea of where 835 came from. Now, now, that is, and, you know, if you want to call it fear, you know, that's an emotion, but it's, there's a lot tied into it that was more just like, what's the word? It's like, not guardian, but you know, yeah, protecting.
Stewardship.
Stewardship. Thank you very much. We're stewards of the town.
So we, this has looked really reactionary to me.
Okay. And it came up quick, and that's fair.
Reactory. So we threw this thing together, we put it in for a short amount of time. In terms, do we have a process for getting this settled? And what is a reasonable amount of time to getting, and who's going to do the work? And when can the property owner or anybody that wants to develop in the Central Business District not be faced with something this arbitrary?
Yeah, well.
Well, this is an arbitrary.
It's not arbitrary.
It's also not reactionary. It's reactive, but it's not reactionary. You have to react to things that happen. Otherwise, you're just doing nothing.
Okay.
And I think, I mean, part of what we haven't, we're talking about right now is like steps that we can do to move forward, you know? What are the things that we can do to bring together? People in the community, planning commission, you know, maybe, maybe, you know, definitely citizens, citizens, you know, not just input, but you know, if there was involvement in the team, or as we, as we look at what the next steps are. And that's, I mean, I'm glad you bring, because one of the things I say, the discussion of establishing criteria should be expanded to include the BOT, the PC, the NDDA, the BZA, landowners, business owners, and of course, the public. Therefore, more time is needed to explore the options and give adequate opportunity for all to weigh in. That's a recommendation. Like, this isn't, you know, two weeks from now, we're going to have an action item where we decide whether we end, or amend, or extend the moratorium. Tonight, we're talking, I'm just putting that out there. Like, that's one thing we realize is some time would be beneficial. But the question today is like, what feedback do we have on this recommendation? What do you like? What do you don't like? And what are next steps that you, that we all foresee? Not just you, I don't put pressure, pressures on all of us. What are, what's the steps that we all see in the process to make this productive?
Yeah. So I think this aim is, it's too specific too soon.
I think you're right.
Yes.
I agree, but I just, you know, it was.
It's getting the discussion started, and that's what's important. And I think the question is, what do we all want this process to look like? I think that's what we kind of need to boil it down to. And so we've heard some ideas. You had asked for a champion back on the January 17th meeting. I would, if I were to dream like what this process might look like, it would be to designate a champion. And I've, you know, I've raised my hand for that. Put together the Tiger team, put together the subarea plan, and get our code in line with what it needs to be. This shouldn't take six months. And we should be able to do that in a very collaborative way with the property owners, with other members of the community, with their inputs, with the different boards. But we do need to identify a team of people who are willing to tackle it and to tackle it well. And so that is something that I would recommend.
Yeah, I appreciate that. I mean, I think what happened for me, and we put out that idea for a champion, and maybe it's a corny word, and people either weren't interested or didn't, didn't want to jump on it. And, but Tanya, you know, had ideas for a criteria. And I was like, well, let's just start there. So me and Tanya got going, and then you were gone for that meeting, and then you said I'd be the champion. So I mean, I feel like we have, you know, good involvement with you, Tanya, you know, and Jesse and I have talked today just about, you know, the value of productive collaborative conversation and, and pre-existing positive relationships and how we can use those well, basically, for the advantage of the town. And that's, and so I feel like there's, there's champions already, but I, but I, you know, a gatekeeper and someone to keep moving the ball is really helpful because I do feel like, yeah, it can be done expeditiously, which would be, I think, what everyone involved would like. You know, you know, I mean, we don't want to drag it on even, even with comments saying we need at least this much time, or, you know, we need this much time or more time. Like, ultimately, people want, you know, you know, a process of next steps. And because we want, you know, something needs to happen, something's going to happen, and we need to be moving in that direction versus not, in my opinion.
So beyond forming the team and kind of saying what it is we want the team to do, I do think we should articulate as a board how we want the team to operate. That is to say, as, as Bob mentioned earlier, we need to have an answer for why whenever we put anything down. So that team has got to look at the documents that we already have because those are the only documents we've got planning wise, right? Not project into the future of what document we might have tomorrow because we don't have it. And if we need it in order to pass the ordinance, then we're going to have to make it, right? So that's going to draw the process out longer and then maybe, and expedited, you know, process is not actually going to happen. So we need to be realistic here and really say, what are our planning documents? How do we make sure that the spirit of those planning documents actually exists in our code? Like, that's what I would want to task somebody with doing over the next whatever months that we agree on, if we agree on an extension to the moratorium, that it be done according to the planning documents that we have, rather than based on arbitrary ideas that individual members of that team might bring.
And I would suggest that there are actually four documents that we need to springboard from. That is the 2030, Invision 2030, the comp plan from 2013, the NDDA master plan that is put together, as well as the design principles.
And the master infrastructure plan.
We could also look at the master infrastructure plan, but those would be ones that are very, very, you know, would very specifically pertain to our CBD.
Yeah. And it's, it is worth noting that when we're talking about zoning and we're talking about non-town owned land and non-town owned assets, that infrastructure doesn't necessarily help us in the conversation, right? If there are infrastructural reasons why we would want to, you know, pass a certain zoning regulation, then fine, right? But I don't think we could get, we should get those things too conflated, right? This is zoning code, land use, not really for town-owned property, right, or town assets, but for private landowners.
So, so just, go, actually, let me just sum up what I heard. 20, so Invision 2030, comp plan 2013, NDDA master plan and design standards, and, you know, a suggestion for the master infrastructure plan, and then, you know, and a suggestion that maybe it's, it's not quite in the same bucket. John? I think I heard you, John.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I appreciate the opportunity to have some, you know, questions about this. Like, I really like what I just heard from Nicole about trying to really accelerate this, but also opening the arms to the community and kind of sending out the message that this isn't, this is not necessarily an oppositional stance this board has to businesses. In fact, what I can say from my own perspective is I don't know what it takes to build, you know, a structure or a development, if it's multiple structures of this size. I don't know if anybody on the board has experience with this either. So I think it's, I think it's a very, it would be a very humble stance that I would like to take personally as a board member, that I don't know what I don't know. And I would like to invite in members of the community, specifically members who have been in the community for a number of years in the business community to help us, to help guide this. Eric, you brought up a great point as well. Infrastructure is a key component to that. I think there may be some very good insight with regard to that from members of the community. So I'm glad to throw my hat in the ring and help you out, Nicole. On Team Tiger, go, go team.
To clarify though, Eric, you were, you were trying to say not to conflate the infrastructure with, with the, with the code and the zoning.
I mean, I think it can inform.
But it shouldn't.
But they're not the same thing, right? Like, what we are trying to offer infrastructurally might not be the same thing as how we would like to see private lands developed.
Exactly. Okay.
But I think a good place to start right now would be looking at our current zoning and see where there's some deficits based on all those plans, the comp plan and the design criteria and the invisions. design criteria and the invisions. Um, that's, that would be, I'd like to work that way versus try to start from nothing and start from the, what we have already and see if there's, if, if we do indeed think that it's weak.
There's probably a pre-step to that of just looking at the design documents, and I'd love some counsel on this, or, you know, some input, but looking at the design documents and making sure those are good because those have to inform the code.
Yeah, and, and my opinion, I think some of those things are a little dated, and that's why I think another meeting should be held regarding the design criteria. I don't think it should just be a meeting of you and me and four other people who decide what the design criteria should be. I think all the different boards should have a moment to look at the design criteria and send in feedback to us so that that, so that we know that everybody's read that, because it's a pretty long document, has everyone read it, and where, and just to get a, like a pulse on all, everybody on, you know, and the, and the town too, obviously, should send some feedback.
The process will have to be expedited, right? If we were to do this well, and so what we might want to do is this, the, looking at the design documents will help inform maybe with that sub-area plan, or maybe articulating and focusing in on that sub-area plan. That sub-area plan will then inform the code. So I guess, you know, we'd have to decide if, if we are going to form a team, and then potentially, maybe that team submits a plan as to what might be some of those steps that might move forward, just so that we can sort of get the gas going on this, right? Put some pedal to the metal, um, so that it doesn't necessarily, and, and yes, while also making sure that we spread out and make sure as many people are involved as possible, but it might just cut down some of the time if team identified, team put process in place, team asks for, if this process is okay, and start moving, would be a suggestion.
Would also help when we get closer to the end of the process, so nobody on this board, for instance, were to be surprised by what's come before them, right? Because then we're going to be set back once again, trying to explain to each other how we got to wherever we got to, right? So if we knew how we were approaching it, that might be easier.
So what's the suggestion?
No, that was, I was agreeing with you, that we should ratify the procedure by which the team is going to execute on this.
Yes.
Right, before they actually do it, so that we're not surprised.
But let the team kind of figure out what that is, um, get some, present it, get some feedback, um, you know, maybe there's something that the team missed or whatever, and then yes, and then execute and start going.
Mayor Billy, can I just jump in? I think just one thought regarding your team, though, is I would be really mindful that you open that up in some sort of capacity, because.
Absolutely.
You have members who, you know, if you've got a very vocal group who are interested, but there are a lot of people that are on the scenes who would be interested, and so.
Absolutely.
Figuring out a structure behind how people can apply to be on this team or whatever that process is like.
I've got a new thing for us, B O T V, B O T V, let it make us.
I like it.
Let me vote.
Is that the access TV channel?
For B O T.
B O T V.
Not too bright.
You got it, you got it, see? B O T V, well, I absolutely, and getting a diverse group, I think is also super important. I, multiple ages, different walks of life, I think that's super important, and to be able to inform what this will look like. But who also have the time to dedicate to it, because it's, Mayor Billy said, this doesn't, this can be done expeditiously.
Which would mean like concentrated numbers.
Concentrated.
Meetings, and, um, something that came up today, and it's totally, and it just might be part of the, the mix, um, and just say, no, this is a bad idea. Um, but you know, the public engagement ideas that came through the library, you know, it's like this, this kind of more, more neutral location, everyone trusts the library, I don't trust the B O T, but they trust the library. Uh, um, so it's like more neutral look, neutral locations, and, um, and just may, may bring in more voices that need to be heard.
Yes, so this is.
It's actually in the district too.
Yes.
Yes, um, so just quickly to pile on that, that was an initiative, um, where myself, Elektra from the library, I believe she's on tonight, we've also got May Gerald and Susan Wagner, who we all met, public engagement has been very important for them. Um, I'm now public engagement liaison, so yeah, being able to, to be at the library and have some of these discussions and this open visceral debate and everything has been something that's, um, very important amongst us as a group, so, um.
Do you want to include people from just that are dead-on residents, or do you want a wider audience?
I'm open to input and counsel i- if I'm selected as the champion.
Yeah, I, I mean, I, I mean, my first, my first take on it is beyond just the bounds of the town, because this effect, I mean, this is a hub for people who don't live in Nederland, so.
More like the library district.
Yeah, library district and, and vision twenty thirty, um, you know, th- those all started to include people who don't live right in town, which I thought was awesome, personally.
Yeah, we got good input. Um, what kind of timeframe were we thinking? What's reasonable? Everything takes a little longer.
I mean, yeah.
Is it, would it be helpful to move to public comment and?
Yeah, yeah, actually, because yeah, I think, I think there's a, that's a great question, there's.
Yeah.
A lot, a lot of questions, a lot of answers around that one, but, uh, let's go ahead, Eric, guys, can we move, I'd like to move, and thank you Nicole for getting me going, to public comment on this agenda item, um, in three minutes, and then we'll start in the room, please. We'll try to keep it to three minutes if we can, ma'am.
Okay, Levins, at the Eldora Road. Um, sitting back here, listening to what you guys are talking about, it's a little scary, because what you're leaving out of this process, and I hope you're not, is, uh, the idea of individualism also. Uh, you hear people describe Netherlands, and the thing they say is, we love our town because it's quirky, it's individual, it's this, it's this. If we start regulating to the point where all of our buildings look the same, and all of the pitches, you know, uh, just because one person doesn't like the color of this building, it should not be regulated that you have to stay within that spectrum of color, or spectrum of window shape, or this or that. So as you talk about and put these things, codify these rules about what you can and cannot build, make sure that there's enough room for Netherlands to be Netherlands, and the individuality of people that live here and own these buildings and love them and want to be quirky. I mean, part of the whole charm of this town is that we are so weird. Um, so when somebody says, well, I don't like this building in downtown, I don't like that color, I thought, you know, the bagel shop, when I drove by there the first time, I went, oh my freaking God, I can't believe they, and then I found out that that's the color of locks. Then it was a joke, and it was funny, and I laughed. That makes sense.
And your shirt.
Our whole town needs to be like, am I sure?
Your shirt.
Their intent.
Oh, your shirt.
Your shirt is the color of locks. There you go.
Woo, sorry. Um.
I didn't know that, I just thought that was an.
So, please, uh, individuality needs to be as important as setbacks are important, height of buildings are important, but the ability to have that level of individuality, and there also needs to be a kind of buy-in where the onus for everything shouldn't be on the applicant. There is a process, but when you make it so difficult for people to build and so, uh, litigiously regulated, you're going to stop any kind of growth or anybody coming up here and wanting to develop and build and make this their home because they can't handle the regulations with no guarantee that there's going to be any payback from what they invest. So, hey, I made it, thank you.
Thanks, Kayla, good, good point, balancing individualism with, you know, the overall vision.
Really, this is Tanya. Am I wrong in thinking that we're mainly focusing on large developments, or are we trying to also focus on every type of development? Like.
Um, I, I think, I think we're mostly focused on the C B D, so I guess I don't really even.
Right, I mean, but like, square footage-wise, I.
I don't think we're there at this second.
Because, well, I mean, I just feel like it's important, different considerations would be in effect.
I think it's important, and it will be important, I just don't necessarily know if that's this moment's.
Well, it's going to be up to whoever is crafting this to decide what large means, and that's a subjective measurement, we have no idea what large is, right? So we have to define that.
So let's, let's.
Start with boundaries, really have to be specific here. Uh, C B D, we assume this is what we're talking about, but.
We might be talking about a sub-area of the C B D.
Yeah, or, uh, something, uh, bigger than, than, than C B D is defined by the G D A.
So it could be bigger or smaller, what would you?
And I definitely want to come back to this conversation, but I'd also like to stick with the public comment right now, so that folks, um, in the room and online can, can share with us, and then we'll come back and talk more. Thank you.
Hi, my name's Teresa Robertson, I live in one forty East First Street. So, uh, three points. I'm really concerned about infrastructure. When I moved here twenty-three years ago, my, um, sewer bill was much different than it is now. My sewer bill, and I live in a nine hundred square foot cabin, that is quirky. I love my cabin. Um, so now I'm paying over a hundred dollars a month for, for, for water, I'm grateful to have water, um, and sewer, but I'm really concerned, and I know why it's that high, is because we decided, I don't know, fifteen, twenty years ago, that we were going to be paying per quarter instead of, um, assigning, um, fees to every resident to pay for our sewer plant. So I'm really concerned about the capacity of our sewer plant for future development, and I think that does need to be a very strong, um, factor that's considered. I think intention is really important, and, um, and I think it's going to be really important to collaborate with our neighborhood. Um, there's a lot of, well, you guys live there, and you should just put up with what's coming, and, um, my neighborhood is really concerned about us turning into West Boulder, uh, becoming bougie land. Um, and I, I would like to understand, I understand that the land is probably going to get developed, but I would like it to be done in collaboration and with understanding with the essence of our, um, East First, Second and Third Street neighborhoods, because it's a very vibrant neighborhood, and we take a brunt. Um, I would like to have sidewalks on First Street. I know when that was suggested for other neighborhoods, I would like, I would like sidewalks, I would like there to be some speed control, so someone doesn't get killed. Um, I don't know, another minute. So I think it's going to be really, really important, um, to include in whatever collaboration you have, someone from our neighborhood, because we, we feel really strongly, and we have felt really jerked around, um, by a certain landlord, landlord saying he was going to do something he hasn't done. We would love to have, um, housing in a certain part, we'd like to have housing as a buffer, and we do not want our zoning changed, we do not want that high-density residential zoning change to C B D. So, that's all, thank you.
Thanks, Teresa, appreciate it. Um, any other public comments? We'll stick with people in the room first, Eric.
I have a question for Mr. Wagner. Uh, what in your experience, uh, you were reticent to have property owners on this committee, what in your experience has, uh, led you to make it, to have a conclusion like that?
The, uh, excuse me, the general concern is that, just like the board of trustee members have to be, um, working on behalf of the entire community and the health, safety, welfare to accomplish that, and not be conflicted, serving their own interests, oftentimes it's been my experience that having, um, a predominantly, law, owner with predominant interest in the property that's subject to future regulation, takes over the meeting, takes over the control of the group, and seeks to regulate because it's their property, and they.
We have to improve a neighborhood that comes up with the same comment. They are looking for their self-interest, uh, Mrs. Robertson just made exactly that point, they want someone on the committee to represent their interests.
Right, the, the perspective, I would argue, for the neighborhood is the neighborhood's relationship to the property that's being subject to regulation. They're not individually being regulated by the plan, they want to make sure it coordinates, right?
I'm going to point out that I never made any promise at all, and she, as this is the fourth time in a public meeting, she's made the comment that I've made such a promise. I need and want a position where I can refute lies like that. And I, and I.
I don't know that Bob Wagner's the, the person to talk to specifically about that right now, maybe I'm wrong, I don't know.
And just, just to be clear, I never advocated that a major property owner should be excluded from the process.
Okay.
Just they shouldn't be.
I wanted to have you clarify.
An active, highly active decision-making person in the process, but they should definitely, I said.
You said, you said they should be consulted.
Always be consulted in their biggest matter. Thank you.
Thanks, Ron. Anyone else in the room have any public comments? Okay, um, folks online? Oh, thank you, sir, come on up, just a second, there's someone else in the room? Oh, go ahead, yeah, please do, just come on up, use the little black mic and, um, say your name.
Dennis Bullion, five twenty, West Fourth. And, uh, the last time I was involved with that emergency moratorium was back in the early nineties, when I was living in Lewisville, in the enclave neighborhood, like the south side of Davidson Mesa. And, uh, early, in the, uh, phone, the phone cell era, and presented to Lewisville was a tower on top of Davidson Mesa, three hundred feet, and the town had no guidelines for that. Boom, emergency moratorium, let's look at this and check this out. And a perfect example for an emergency moratorium. This example that's going on right now, with a, with some guidelines that were already in place, with the, uh, Mr. Mitchell's project that's been going on for years, and nobody, and shouldn't have taken anybody by surprise if they wanted to, uh, look to make sure what he was coming up with was going to stick with the guidelines, but at the timing that this thing happened, seemed more motivated by other than, let's let the community have a good look at this. Uh, it was, I, I think it, that was a different motivation. It definitely needs, our guidelines for these, uh, developments certainly do need to be reviewed on, on a basis of, of certain times when you think things are not happening like that we think we should do now. But this moratorium was not fairly implemented, I think it should have been lifted and, and soon, and then, or at least have the B O T, uh, set a time, a timeframe for quick action and be able to take advantage of these, uh, well-developed improvements that, uh, our citizens want, you know, Mr. Mitchell's has spent a lot of time and money taking, doing this project, and it shouldn't have been any surprise that they have to come all of a sudden and say, whoop, wait a minute, moratorium time, we can't, we, we don't want you to do anything more. And it just seemed to be very unfair, and I think that's, uh, people should consider that when they're looking at this moratorium and using moratoriums like this. So that's what I wanted to say about that, Ron.
Oh, no, sorry, Ron.
If I could just quickly respond, thank you so much for that comment. I just wanted to respond that, uh, what is, what was, nothing was presented to us, we have no project on the table, right? Um, this is about lot-line dissolutions, right? With no project attached, there's no project attached to this, right? And that is our concern, that there is no project, right? So we're being asked to look at lot-line dissolutions and the way that they work in our code, such that we can ensure that a project does happen, not so that we can stop a project. It doesn't matter if it's in the library, it's not legal, that's not legal, right? That's not in front of me. Yeah, but that's just an idea, that's just a drawing. That's all it is, it's just an idea, right? It hasn't been presented with any kind of application for us to approve, so we would be approving something that's completely disconnected from any such project, which puts the town at risk.
Hey Dennis, if you want to, because we do, we usually go three minutes of comments, but we give extra time for the, you know, for us if we ask you questions, but no one can hear you but us, can you mind coming back to the mic, because there's a lot of people online who probably want to hear what you have to say?
Mr. Eric was, looked like he was addressing to me, so I thought I'd have to.
No, you can, yeah.
Um, and so, reading the guidelines for this lot-line dissolution and, and.
And so reading the guidelines for this lot line dissolution and, and I didn't say anything, a project needs to be presented with this.
You're right. That's why we, that's why we have an emergency moratorium.
But the guidelines were there.
But the no application was submitted, sir.
There wasn't required, right?
No application was submitted.
Correct.
At all.
Oh, you mean for.
Even under current guidelines, there was no application submitted.
No application for.
For lot line dissolution.
So this is not a moratorium for a lot line for this whole thing?
No, this is a moratorium for lot line dissolution. No application had been submitted. We believed that it would be.
Right. So I just want to clarify, an application was submitted, but it was deemed incomplete by town staff.
That, that is the equivalent of no application. It's incomplete. It, it doesn't count yet.
Well, okay.
It's exactly why we have these kinds of tools, as, as Attorney Wiedner suggested, so that we can ensure that things don't bide inside the town when they don't have their code up to date.
Oh yeah, an application, okay, you did this incomplete, can you finish it up for me? And then submit the application. But now that's over. I mean, that can't, that can't happen now, because, because all of a sudden, oh, wait a minute. There's a lot line dissolution and you want to make one big piece of property and it don't look like it's something that we want to do, so let's put the moratorium on, you get it figured out.
Well, this board hasn't voted on whether or not we want to do it yet or not. So we don't know what the recommendation is going to be, but we thought it was important enough to the town and to the town's interests that we consider it before we allow it to, to move forward.
Yeah. It just looked like everything should have been, I thought, was it, I wasn't shocked by anything that Mr. Mitchell had planned years down the road here, you know?
Sure. But those plans have never come before a board that I've been on, so I can't, they're legally binding in any way.
Yeah, you're right, yeah.
Thanks Dennis. Any other questions from folks in the room? Any other comments? All right, then we would like to move to folks online.
Kathleen Chibai.
Kathleen? Doesn't sound like you need to call in. Okay Kathleen, I think you're connected, but we can't hear you at the moment.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Kathleen Chibai, I'm against the moratorium. I want to support everything that was just said by the person in front of me. And when an application, I mean, the, the AIM packet said, an application had been filed, which triggered this. And so I don't know why we keep saying there wasn't an application. That bothers me, Eric, and I'm sorry that you keep saying that. Town staff is the one who decided it's incomplete and now we're hearing, I mean, what Ron applied for is legal, dissolving the lines. He applied for it. You can say it's incomplete, but you can ask anybody. The date on it when he applied is the date he applied. So I don't know what was incomplete. I'm just saying, when I'm the public and I'm looking at the packets and sitting through these meetings, I'm really disheartened, especially by the comments made by Eric because they're being misrepresented and that bothers me. I'm for property rights and you get an application in, the rules are as they stand and we can't even plan, Ron can't even plan his project until he has clear, clean titles. He told you that. He told you that. So don't expect anything to occur further than it already has, my God. And I agree, this isn't a surprise to anybody, what Ron's needing to do. Neither is the dissolving of the lines. He, obviously he was going to have to do that. His plan has been sitting down, I think six years, six years we've been staring at the plan, okay? So I don't know what to say. I'm against the moratorium altogether. I don't believe there's any emergency whatsoever and especially when it's town staff accepting an application and then returning it and saying it's incomplete. When, when he's applied at the, under the timeline, I'm sorry. So it's bothersome to me because it sounds like all of a sudden we're going to cram, now we're going to rush six months to try to make changes, which I don't even know what changes we might possibly need, okay? Because we don't need more regulation or nobody will be able to be successful in what the comp plan suggests, which is infill in the CBD, infill in the CBD, okay? That's been the goal for 40, 40 years. And somebody, I just spoke to May Gerald Knight, who worked on In Vision 2030. She said this issue did not come up anywhere in any of those meetings, that there was a problem with the comp plan. And Cynthia Baki told me this weekend that the AIM actually said chapter 16 needs to be corrected, but she said, you guys, the BOT replay, repealed and replaced all of chapter 17, which is about subdivisions and the line dissolution. So it's being misrepresented as now we need to fix chapter 16, when really this was a fix of repeal and replace of chapter 17, according to Cynthia Baki, who lived through it. He was on the committee. He already wrote, rewrote the line dissolution, according to the town staff person who helped work on it. So yeah, it's upsetting that this is being twisted to make it seem like this is not a reaction to Ron Mitchell's application to dissolve his property lines, which we all knew was coming. So thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, no one said it wasn't a reaction to that. It absolutely was a reaction to that.
And you did make some very good points, especially early on, that appreciate.
Scott Pappage.
Scott.
Hi, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, this is Scott Pappage, I'm a resident of Netherlands. I've heard a couple of comments now that there's no need for a moratorium, that this is a time for quick action and I couldn't possibly disagree more. We've already heard from a professional in this area who's said that moratoriums for this exact reason and other reasons similar to this are common, and this is the exact reason to do them. And, and I think there's never been a better time for intentional action, not quick action, but intentional action. Whatever we do at this point in time as a community is going to last a long time. Whatever we do, we'll, we'll have to live with it. So why don't we be pleased, more intentional than quick? Thank you.
Thanks Scott.
Jim Reese.
Jim?
Yes, Jim Reese, 56 Barker Road, Netherlands. I, I also am, I'm calling, I, I sent, I submitted a letter about the concern that this, that folks were concerned about this targeting of specific property owner. And I'm just calling in to reinforce that, that I, I personally want to say, I really appreciate Attorney Wiedner speaking on the reasons why a moratorium is appropriate as a tool to use to shape our community through code. Given the scope and scale of the proposed project from the central business district, you know, I think it's important right now to not do what some of the things I've been hearing. Let's expedite, let's be quick. This is a time, just like what Scott said, to be deliberate and thoughtful and I think engage in an expert outside planner. As much as I appreciate all the willingness of the volunteers in town, I don't think that anybody currently that's listening to this, other than maybe Attorney Wiedner, has the planning expertise to consider a project of the size that's going to come before the planning commission and the BOT in the near future. I think it's completely appropriate to target one property owner if the potential projects are of such a size and magnitude to dramatically alter the character of our downtown area. I don't think this is targeting one specifically Ron Mitchell, rather somebody who owns an entire block of the central business district, you know, closer to two. I, I just really feel like this is a time where we need to engage some kind of an outside planner or JVA or somebody to come in and advise on this. And I think six months to wait for a project the size of what's supposed to be coming is a small amount of time to actually consider and look at the code and be sure that this is what the community wants. I do not think the majority of our community wants to grow up to be Black Hawk. I just don't think that's the case. If I'm wrong, then we need to have deliberate public meetings. We need to ensure that we're hearing that and we need to, then of course, shape the code to become that. But I, I don't think that's the case. You know, I, I just feel like we're at a time right now, a crossroads in the development of our central business district in Netherlands. And this is a time where six months is not a long time to wait for three-story block-long buildings that could potentially come and change the entire character of our town. I, I once again implore you to consider getting an outside expert to come in, a planning expert and help advise the group. And by the time you start seeing what it takes to get all these boards and everybody involved with your champion and the group to, to take all this input in and put together a proposal and possibly actually revise code if that ends up being the course. I think that six months is going to be a pretty short period of time. And given the scope of the project, I think it's completely appropriate. Thank you.
Thanks Jim. Any other comments from folks, virtually, attended virtually? Well, Dennis, I think we just do, and I, sorry Ron, I said, no, I shouldn't have said, I was kind of rude, but we let folks have one comment usually, so.
Can Ellen give Dennis her, her three minutes?
Sure. Yeah, I mean, yes, as you can, yes.
You know, a development that's already been in and works for a while, nobody knows that.
Talk right into, talk right into the mic, sorry, it's.
Okay. So about a project that's been in works for a long time and Mr. Mitchell's put in a lot of time and money and effort for, for our vision in this town for all of us, not just for him, his. And, and he will be subject to a lot of scrutiny once his project gets presented. Moratorium is not a bad idea if everybody needs to get back on the board with a guideline review. But I suggest then let Mr. Mitchell's application go forward and keep that moratorium, you know, henceforth after that. Get this one last application through. I mean, he's finally got out of his ducks in a row to get this application for a lot line resolution. And to, to timing for that is kind of just looks like it's just not as, as fair to a, to a citizen who's put years of time into this. And he supports the, all the little events that happen downtown. He's always there providing parking and benches and, and barricades and, and traffic control. I mean, he's, he's a part of the community that, and he's taking, wants to take, wants it to happen. And I think it, we all know that, we all knew that. And then to have him right here and then shut the door in his face was, was a pretty cruel and shabby way of treating a citizen like, any citizen, I guess. Okay, that was Ellen's three minutes, I guess.
Andrew Dewar, online.
Thanks Dennis. Andrew.
Hi there, from Santa Fe. This is kind of like a, just a interesting conversation that I had. I'm in Santa Fe right now and was, just happened to be talking with the former mayor of Santa Fe from, his name is Sam Pick, from the mid eighties to the mid nineties. And he said, you know, whenever Santa Fe was looking to try to figure out land use and comprehensive planning, they looked to Boulder. And that was the kind of where they took their lead from and, you know, nothing, I think Santa Fe is, you know, nice. Personally, but I, I don't want to live in a, wouldn't want to live in a town where, you know, all the buildings are restricted to a certain color. And, you know, certainly I do support height variances, but all of downtown, the, what I would consider, you know, short of some of the historic chapel sites and landmarks that are really truly landmarks. All of the downtown of Santa Fe is, you know, large, multi-block, mixed-use, high-density development. So I think ultimately, you know, when this goes to a champion or there's a committee and studies are done about tax revenue and, you know, tax base and improvement and so on and so forth. We're, you know, probably going to see that, you know, higher density and infilling of the, of downtown is, is probably what's recommended. I don't know. But I just, it's kind of an interesting, long conversation with the former mayor of someone who, you know, basically said, we took all of our direction from Boulder. And I know Netherlands doesn't take all of its direction from Boulder, but we, we take a lot of it from Boulder. So just, you know, something to think about here, wanted to share from Santa Fe. Thanks.
Thanks Andrew. Have fun down there. And yep, who else has comments, folks online? Okay, hearing, hearing no other comments. We'll bring it back to, to the board. I'll be, actually, that's a great idea. We're going to go ahead and take a five-minute break. Thanks Ron. And we'll be back here around 9:27.
Those were all of our highlights. A couple of ago, a big first half, it shuts.
All right, folks, when you, when you can, we'll go ahead and get started. We are missing one trustee. Oh, there she is. Thanks, everyone. We'll go ahead and get started again. And at this point, we'll just bring it back to the trustees to, to talk more about, about just next steps and what we're thinking.
I did have something I wanted to talk about.
Yes.
And it, you know, it kind of matches with what Kayla was saying. I, you know, I'm personally, and I know that this matters to people, right? So I'm not saying don't put these in here or don't consider this. But the kind of design standards thing matters to me a lot less than lot size, maximum minimums, yard and bulk, like that kind of stuff. That's actually kind of grounded in some technical terms that we can use effectively rather than subjective, kind of, you know, how things look kind of regulations like those. I'm not that particularly interested in myself, right? And so while I appreciate that design standards are important to a lot of people in town, I would really like to see coming out of this group, out of this task force, a, some, some really clear stuff regarding regulations that are very kind of enforceable in a numerical kind of a way, that are deeply rooted and directly traceable to language in the comprehensive planning documents that we have for the town. So that's what I'm hoping that we actually get out of this. I think that would be the most powerful thing that we could get out of this. You know, kind of beyond that design standard idea. Because I don't want this to turn into a conversation for the public as well about paint color, right? Like, I don't think that that's really what we're talking about here.
No, that's not what we're talking about.
And the other thing. Oh, shit, I just forgot. Well, I lost it. I'll come back.
Well, I, I would like to participate in the discussions, the, the group that gets formed. So I'll just let everybody know. And I, I do think that design criteria is more than color of a building. It has to do with facades. It has to do with possibly, in my opinion, valuable would be open space, green spaces, things of that nature. And I personally would like to see this conversation focused on CBD and definition of large developments. As you can see in the design criteria document that is definitely dated and old, there is a section on large. And I guess we definitely needed to find what large means for starts. But talking about how the, you know, and that's something I think everyone needs to look at personally before we can discard the idea of some of these design criterias that have some value to it, especially when we're talking about the look of a couple of blocks of, of a town. So that's, I'm kind of opposite on Eric on that a little bit because I do think it's important. I'm not talking about color per se. Talking about quality of life for the rest of the people in this town besides just the developer.
I did remember what the, my second thing was, which was that, piggybacking on Jim Reese's comment, do you think it would be great to consult a planner who is an expert planner? I don't think that that would be a bad idea. I don't think that that person necessarily needs to be on the team the entire time and that we have to spend a whole lot of money on it. But at least a few consultations with somebody that gives us enough information to move forward with.
I think that, that was already suggested by Attorney Madsen of Planner/Mark, you know, like a market specialist kind of person.
Yeah.
Is there, is there somebody in mind that can be utilized quickly?
I mean, Attorney Madsen had some, you know, some suggestions and she can pull on that pretty quickly. Yeah.
Who else has, who else has something under mine? And we tell the trustees. What do other trustees think right now? Okay.
But I just want to kind of paint a little bit of context as well. I just want to make sure that we're also interjecting the idea that we're not, at least I am getting up to speed on this. And I'm not understanding this issue to be raised against a nameless, faceless corporation, but somebody who's very human and has had a lot of human contact with a lot of the town, including me as the new guy, and has gone out of his way to really spark conversations with everybody and anybody about this subject. So I, again, I just want to raise the idea of while we're talking about, you know, consultants and, and planning, that we also think about the idea of embracing the business owner who has come forward with a plan to really renovate and renew the town in a way. It may not be the way that everybody agrees with, but I'll tell you, it, it's at least an improvement from a bunch of dirt lots. That's just my opinion. You know, I'm, I'm just one person and I'm open-minded. So, you know, tell me where I'm wrong and missing things. But also, I know that I don't have the, the scope or the experience to, to help build something like this. And it kind of excites me to think about a renovation of the entire downtown area in one fell swoop. Just personally, I, I don't, I don't necessarily know if I can close my eyes and envision something as large as we've been talking about. But I'll, I'll tell you guys this. It doesn't surprise me that people come through this town and tell us that we seem to have an identity crisis. I mean, we don't even know who we don't want to be like. Some weeks I hear it's Breckenridge, some weeks I hear it's West Boulder, and then some weeks I hear it's Black Hawk. And I, I just feel like improvement can be a partnership. And I just want to raise the idea of embracing the people who are throwing blood, sweat, and tears at improvement into that conversation. So that's my opinion. And I, I know that, you know, people get very emotional about this. And some people I greatly respect have given me very good points both for and against this. And I, I want to take all of that consideration to heart and not take this lightly. But at the same time, also embrace the people who want to improve things. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thanks, John. And as you accurately noted, we do not want to be like any town that starts with the letter B. That's a joke.
But I, I just want to add something really quick regarding this conversation that people keep saying, and Eric made a point to respond to the comment, that we're, we're rejecting a plan of development. And that's, to me, is the biggest problem, that we're not presented with a plan. We're just presented with a lot consolidation. I really wish there were a plan attached to it. I really wish we knew what the intentions were behind the lot consolidations. And I wish there were a plan. And so we're not rejecting a plan. There was never a plan given. And the fact that something's at a library doesn't mean that it's been submitted as part of this project by any means. And so I think that, to me, that's what motivated this concern. If he had come with a plan and a timeline of when it's going to happen, I wouldn't be that concerned myself because personally, I do think his, his potential fits a lot of, checks a lot of boxes for a building that big for, in the design criteria that's already here in Ned and our comprehensive plan. Because nothing has been submitted and we're just talking about lot consolidations, it's, that's what's opened up this whole conversation, in my opinion. And maybe I'm wrong. That's why, that's why we're having this conversation, for me.
Yeah, to, to address what Tony just said and what John just said, I think simultaneously, is I agree with everything that both folks just said. Like, I am genuinely not sitting here crossing my fingers under the table hoping that the task force that is assigned to this, to this work comes back with something that would preclude any designs or ideas that are floating out there at the library or otherwise, right? That's not what I'm hoping for. I'm hoping for that we have criteria, right? That we have a plan for moving forward. And it's not just, as Attorney Weiner put it, accidental that we end up with the town that we end up with, right? So we're not sitting here thinking, how can we figure out a way to reject Ron's plan, right? We're not trying to reject Ron Mitchell's plan. It's not what I'm trying to do. I'm trying to make sure that when we do major things in a key part in town that we know, hopefully, or we can at least account for as much as we possibly can in terms of what the future might hold for us, right? That, to me, is the key. And if we're not doing that, to me, that's bad stewardship. And I'm not doing my job as a, as a trustee. So that's the way that I'm thinking about this. It's about lot line dissolution. It's about what that could be, thinking in the worst, projecting toward the worst possible outcome and saying, how can we avoid that as a town, right? How can we ensure as best to our ability that we avoid the worst possible outcome? And we haven't done that. And so that's why this moratorium, I think, needs to be in place so that we can do that.
Thanks, Eric. Other comments from the trustees? What? Oh, oh, yes, or.
It's Miranda. I guess I'm just, I know it's going to come up tomorrow. Your team, how you want to build that team. I really strongly encourage you to talk about that right now because if the time is of the essence, letting us push out the message about how people can apply or be a part of this team, I think is really important.
That sounds good. So I guess, I guess the first thing is just, actually, actually, yeah, Jesse, go for it. Sorry. Thank you. And thanks, Miranda.
Thanks for the great discussion all around for everybody. I wrote down some notes. Been doing my best to take it all in and, you know, really consider all the, all the points. So, let's see. I want to do my best to present my, my points of consideration in as organized a manner as I can, but it, they're all, they're still occurring to me. But I, I want to just jump in here with some of them because of what Miranda just said. And particularly, we need to decide as a board to extend the moratorium. I don't feel that, you know, next meeting is enough time to do anything other than to decide to extend or not to extend. So I feel like until we agree to extend, formulating a team or identifying objectives of things we need to achieve before we lift the moratorium is premature. So really, for me, whether or not to extend the meeting is, or the, the moratorium is, is really our primary consideration at this point. And I think it's the best use of our time is to wrestle over this question. I would like to ask you, Tom, just based on your, and then I'd like to keep talking based on your answer a little bit. I, I'm not done yet, but I, I am curious to hear from you, Tom, just the way you kind of were asking the questions initially at this meeting on this topic. It occurred to me that I wasn't entirely sure why you voted for the moratorium. And I'd like to ask you why you voted for the moratorium.
Because it was the shortest amount of time possible. I never agreed with the way it was put. I still don't agree with the way it came together at all. There was two trustees that went off by themselves and cooked something up and threw it, threw it in front of us and we had to do something. And I just wanted the shortest amount of time possible, and that's where we ended up.
But you did still vote for a moratorium, as did I.
For a couple of weeks, for five weeks.
But why, why did you allow it to go even for a couple of weeks? Because.
Okay, I'll rescind my vote.
Well, that's not what I'm saying. I guess I'm, I think, I think the arguments that I made in our last meeting won your vote. And I'll reiterate my arguments, which were, I am not convinced that we need to have a moratorium, that this is an emergency. And yet, however, I, in the spirit of being a, a good colleague and, and having good faith with the rest of you all and with Jennifer specifically, because I understood this to be coming primarily from our legal counsel and with, with Billy, your endorsement, that even though I wasn't fully convinced of the, the need for us to have a moratorium, I wanted to at least grant more time to consider whether or not to extend a moratorium. And so I voted, okay, we'll give you, you know, we'll give a little bit of time to consider whether or not we need to have a moratorium now. And at that time, I said, our default mode is to encourage investment in our downtown and to allow, you know, our downtown is in need of. and to, um, allow, you know, our downtown is in need of investment and redevelopment. And we can all agree on that. And, um, you know, Christian Vanek is also a new property owner here. He's looking to invest and to build and to improve. And I want us to be an environment and a, and a town that is friendly towards that, um, initiative, that spirit of improvement and reinvestment. And so our default mode is to not be putting roadblocks for the sake of roadblocks in front of our investors and developers. So we agreed to a moratorium. We have a moratorium now. Our moratorium is set to expire on our next meeting. Um, should we not agree that an extension is warranted? Okay, is, you guys follow me? Um, so, you know, uh, Tom, you were saying, oh, this is reactionary. Eric, you're saying this is reactive, you know, both good points. I'm wondering if we can, uh, in the spirit of collaborating with Ron, you know, and we also got some really fantastic counsel from, um, Mr. Bob.
Wyner with a long eye.
And, you know, I really appreciated all the, all the points of consideration that you shared with us in the executive session, as well as in the open meeting. Um, the, there is one, uh, point that I feel like we are specifically unique in our town in the fact that we have potentially, um, you know, the single largest potential investor and landowner in our town who happens to be a resident of our town longer than everybody here, except for maybe Ms. Glasser, maybe, maybe Kayla. But, you know, much longer than any of us on the BOT, any of us in the town staff. And, um, you know, I have personally witnessed Ron, you know, being a fantastic neighbor and community member. And, um, you know, we're guarding against developers who are, have a primary interest of the dollars and the bottom line and the profits. And I feel like we as in Netherlands are incredibly blessed to have folks like Ron who are looking to invest here. And instead of whatever private equity firm out of Denver or Chicago or who knows where. And also Kayla Evans, you know, is a fantastic, um, model citizen of our community. And she's looking to do a development here. Like, we could not be more fortunate in terms of having people who are, um, you know, trustees of our, not elected trustees, but, you know, still, uh, fantastic stewards and representatives of our, of our community who are in the unique positions of being developers here. So that is one point where I would say, you know, developers by definition have a profit motive above and beyond all else. Well, I don't think so, not in, not in this case. And, um, that's not to say they don't have a profit motive or that, that the, the numbers don't have to work out. But, um, we have more than that. Um, so one question I have as far as if we do extend the moratorium or we don't extend the moratorium is if, can we, rather than be reactionary, can we allow Ron to dissolve the lot lines? Lift the moratorium on the lot line dissolution? Look one or two steps down the road in terms of what Ron's going to need to do next. Let's put a moratorium on that. That way Ron can go ahead and get some of the, um, some of his progress done. Because a project like this is a huge project, which if done right, is going to benefit everybody and Ron's going to do most of the work. So we are really lucky for that regard. So if we can make his life a little easier instead of a little more difficult and still achieve our goals, which is to influence and steer and, and have some, you know, guidelines that are enforceable, that's the path that I want us to find. So can we put a moratorium on, for example, building permits?
Um, I, there was a-
That seems way worse.
Just one sec, just if I can address it real fast. There was a strong, uh, if you remember, like Christian Vanek and others, there was a lot of people who have building permits and maybe Ron, I'm not sure, I apologize. Who, who, and we decided we did not want to get in the way of that at the moment. But no, keep, keep talking.
I'm using that as an example because, um, I, I would imagine that there may be some other checkpoints. And this is the kind of thing that I want to, these, some of the questions that I want to get answered in between now and our next meeting, when we're set to either extend or allow to expire our existing moratorium. So I want to make the right decision for our town and I want to be a good steward and a good trustee. So that means making a, a good, sound decision that is weighing all these things, um, heavily and, and correctly. So, um, if there are some other checkpoints that Ron's going to need to go through before he can start pounding nails, can we put a moratorium on one, or, or one of these things that may be one or two steps down the road in front of Ron? That way Ron can go ahead and get going with his lot line dissolution. Because I don't see anything inherently wrong with dissolving lot lines on a lot, on a block that has incredibly messy lot lines to begin with, you know? Uh, buildings are all over the place, lot lines are all over the place. If nothing else happens, except for those lot lines get dissolved, that could be an inherent benefit to the town currently. And, but I don't know that. It, it could be, it could, maybe not. But you guys see what I'm getting at is that, um, I think it would be a much more constructive and friendly position for us to take towards Ron in this position, in this moment, to allow him to do some of the heavy lifting, take one more step towards working on getting his investors, his title insurance, you know, his, um, some of the groundwork of what he's going to need to do in order to get his, uh, project off the ground. And meanwhile, we can still protect our ability to steer and to ensure that the things that we want to see happen will actually happen in the unfortunate event of Ron's, you know, untimely demise. We, we gotta say that at every meeting, I think.
You're going to win the lottery and say?
If Ron wins the lottery, yes, that's what we'll start saying. So I think that's, that's all I have to say. And, uh, I appreciate all of your time for, for listening and hearing me out. I know, Eric, you're ready to jump.
I'm ready.
And, uh, I think that is, uh, I think that's the good faith move on our part. And I think that's about it. Thank you.
So, th- thank you. Can I make one clarification real quick, just real fast? I know you were frustrated about, you know, it came on too fast, you know, three weeks ago. And, and, and it, it was surprised. And it was, it wasn't two trustees, I don't think, was it? It was just me and, and the lawyer.
You and, well, and then-
And then so this, this is this week, this is, this came out of it with like, saying, well, here's things we can put up as a criteria. And again, these are ideas. I think Nicole said it best, they're way ahead of, they're potentially, you know, too soon. They're really not what we need to have in front of us. But it was getting something on the board, the whiteboard, you know, that we can work with. It was not, um, this is our path and this is, this is, and we're here now. It was really just a start.
I, I'd like to, real quick, speak to those points on there. I felt like it would be in benefit, maybe it could just be added, like specifically for this particular lot line dissolution as, uh, considerations, reasonable considerations for those plans to be submitted with the lot line dissolution in the case of Ron, because he has all of that pretty much ready and he could submit all that. And, and so that way it's not a lot line dissolution without any plan attached to it. It is, and that, that is why I thought that criteria was important. For, in order to actually, we could, I thought we could get this done really quickly, just like that. And it would be of benefit to Ron. And maybe, you know, I'm going to talk to him probably later, but I think none of those, like having a criteria and having a plan, since he has a lot of that already done, wouldn't be a hindrance and it would actually, anyway, I'm not making any sense because I'm tired. But the, I just was trying to get rid of the lot line dissolution without a plan attached aspect. That is what, that's, I think different things bother different people on here. That's the only thing that bothers me is, is, because I know that there is not a hammer or nails ready to go on this. So it could be years before it starts being built and a lot can change in years. Uh, lots could be sold and no plans attached and we have to start over. And that's, well, I guess in that time we make our criteria in the zoning, that's fine, too.
Thanks. Thanks, Tanya. Eric?
So I was just going to say that I agree in spirit with everything that Jesse said. I don't think that, uh, allowing the lot line dissolution to proceed from here achieves that. And here's, here's why, I guess. It's because it is not actually the building part that I'm worried about. It's the not building that I'm worried about. And I don't think we can take it on faith. I don't think that, uh, it's responsible enough for us to take it on faith that, uh, if we say, okay, everything is approved today, that it'll actually happen. Unless we have legal mechanisms to ensure that it does happen in the way that it's laid out before us. And in order for that to happen, it needs to be laid out before us, which it hasn't been, right? So I'm not worried about the building part here at all or the improvement part. I want to see improvements in our downtown as well. But I actually want to see improvements. And we run the real risk of having the opposite of improvement. We run the real risk here of having unim- disimprovement, unimprovement, right? Unimproved land, right? That is not usable for any use is a real risk, right? It's not a hypothetical risk, it's an actual risk, right? Things could go wrong, things might not happen. And so I think we need to stop that from happening as much as we can and ensure that what we want to see happen actually gets done. And that starts with where the lines are drawn.
We could put a moratorium on demo permits in CBD.
Interesting.
Well, that, that's not going to help the Snyder's Garage guy who's about to start-
They're already permitted.
Okay. Um.
But why is that any more helpful items? I guess why not just start with where we are now?
The lot lines are currently a mess.
Uh huh. Yeah, but what, what difference does it make?
Well, it could be an inherent benefit is, I guess, is kind of what I'm trying to get at is, um, you know, to, to erase all the interior lines and do one line around them all. It, it could be a cleaner legal situation for anybody who owns that property at that point.
Well, that's what concerns me, though. It could be a cleaner legal situation to offload the property. I mean, we don't, I mean, it's the thing, though, then, then all these plans at the library become completely irrelevant. So the idea that we act on good faith, I think, is a bad idea. We can't act on good faith. We need to act according to what is in the best interest of the town.
And only very few people could afford to buy a quarter of the town like that. And those are large developers.
I'm, I'm saying, we, I agree with you. We are lucky to have people who live here, who are invested in the community. We are lucky to have that. We need to ensure that that actually happens, though. Because it might not. We can't guarantee it. You just can't. We can't say, hey, Kayla, do you guarantee without a shadow of a doubt that everything will happen exactly as you say it will and take that on faith? We need to, we need to sign it on an actual agreement, right? That's legally binding. That, that's, that's my thinking on it. It has nothing to do with building anything. It's, that, the fear is that we don't build. The fear is that it doesn't work out. And then we have put the town in a bad position and we need to, and then someone else is going to have to clean up that mess. I'm not saying it's going to happen. I'm saying we're putting ourselves in a position where it could.
Mayor Billy, I just want to motion to extend time. Right there.
Yes, so I will make a motion to extend the meeting, um.
So I, what I'd like to just let you know, you have lots of people online who wanted to give public comment about short-term rentals, who have waited this entire meeting. And that financial policy really has to get approved tonight because we already submitted the budget book.
Okay, so?
Well, this is a discussion, I guess, and not an action item, so.
Right, right. So, yeah, and actually, there's not even next steps. Um, well, actually, there's not even direction to the-
Except for the team and the-
I'm, I'm going to make a motion. I'm going to make a motion that we extend the meeting to get to the action items we need to get to, uh, till 10:30.
Second.
Take the roll, please, Mason.
Trustee Mountain.
Yes.
Trustee Sterling.
Yes.
Trustee Kim Sisma.
Yes.
Mayor Billy.
Yes.
Mayor Protemahol.
Yes.
Trustee Severs.
No.
And Trustee Corvalon?
Yeah.
Thank you. The motion passes.
Thanks. All right, well, thanks, everyone. Um, so let's, um, the reality is, as I look at the questions before the board, you know, we asked for feedback. Gotten feedback. Um, recommendations for next steps? I think we have some ideas as for like creating a team. I don't really know that that decision could possibly be made this evening. And I'm going to say it can't be. So any closing comment before we move to the action items?
Let's move on.
Okay, that sounds good. Um, appreciate that. So, um, we're going to go ahead, we have two action items tonight. Um, a finance, uh, the first one is 7.1 Financial Policy Amendment. And Miranda?
All right, so before you is a financial policy amendment. When we are working on the 2020, sorry, that should be 2022 budget book. We identified that the policy really prohibited the Board of Trustees to do investments like the one up through C-Safe. Um, the current language prohibited due to a Public Deposit Protection Act approved investment only. And so something like C-Safe does not fall within those parameters. Therefore, we are seeking to amend the resolution and the financial policy to allow for larger, broader investments. So tonight, we just need you to, assuming you agree, we need you to approve Resolution 2023-08, which does amend the revised financial policy. Because we had to turn in the budget book by January 31st, we did make the change in the budget book. So this is just helping to ensure that our records are clean and clear, that we can have a broader form of investment should the, the town so choose to do so.
Thanks, Miranda. Any clarifying questions from the trustees?
I had one. Um, I'm looking at the resolution itself and I'm looking under Investment Policy, the second paragraph, starting the town will monitor the cash flow. Uh, I was wondering if that second sentence there, the criteria for selecting an investment will include if we could put in order of priority, safety, liquidity and yield.
Hmm, yes.
Because it seems to me that we could reorder those, uh, under this language and we could go for yield over safety.
Yes. So if you want to offer that amendment to the financial policy, when you approve the resolution, we will make that change.
Okay.
I don't know, um, if I agree with that necessarily, because safety is subjective. And, you know, commonly considered to have an inverse relationship to yield.
Right, but I mean, if we're committing town funds to a, something that's high yield, but categorically unsafe, I think that would be a problem. And so it would be incumbent upon town staff and the BOT at any point to basically say, we think this is safe. Now we can talk about liquidity and yield. And then they would be accountable for that, rather than be able to say, hey, we didn't have to prioritize safety over yield.
Right. I see your point. Can we, um, move to approve?
No, we, we need to take public comment. I'm just trying to digest that, the, but, um, anyone else have any clarifying questions before we go to the public comment? Okay, we'll go ahead. Actually, Tanya, Tom, or Tanya and John, just before I move to the public comment, any clarifying questions before we move?
No. Thanks.
Noted. I don't either.
Okay, we're going to open this up for public comment. Um, start in the room. Okay, we'll go ahead to folks online. Anyone online have any public comments on, um, this action item of Financial Policy Amendment? Not seeing any hands. So, um, I think, I think we have no public comments. So we'll bring it back to the board for final discussion and motion.
I'd like to make a motion to approve Resolution 2023-08 with the amendment that in the last sentence of section- with the amendment that in the last sentence of Section 3 of the resolution, it reads, "The criteria for selecting an investment will include in order of priority, safety, liquidity, and yield."
I second.
Thank you. Macy, could you take the role?
Trustee Kunsizma.
Yes.
Trustee Severs.
Yes.
Trustee Mountain.
Yes.
Trustee Sterling.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Mahol.
Yes.
Trustee Corvalon.
Yes.
And Mayor Billy.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. That was great. This next one should go almost as fast. All right, so from here, we move on to Action Item 7.2. I'm sorry, I'm just getting to it. Short-term rental ordinance for Class A license amendment. Macy.
So at our meeting on October 18th of 2022, the BOT asked town staff to do an update on short-term rental. There was a few asks from the BOT, but tonight we'll be talking about the Class A license reinstatement, the impact of short-term restrictions on other municipalities, and the short-term rental audit that was conducted by town staff. So tonight, we're mostly focusing on the Class A license reinstatement. That's discussing Ordinance 836, which is before you tonight. Ordinance 836 removes the requirement that Class A licenses had to have been applied for before September 16th of 2020, as well as the requirement that the detached ADU had to have been constructed and operated as an STR before April 16th, 2019. This means that property owners can rent ADUs as short-term rentals, regardless of whether they did so before Ordinance 798 was codified, and that new ADUs can be constructed for short-term rental use. If the BOT passes Ordinance 836, Class A licenses will be reinstated effective 30 days from the date of publication, which would be this Thursday. Should I keep going on the other items? Or do you want to talk Class A?
So I think all we're doing tonight is Class A. We offered some additional kind of comments about the other work that's been done, and we're happy to answer questions. Macy's doing a thorough review of Chapter 6, which is where short-term rental lives. And so we'll come back to you with some more modifications in terms of clarifying language and cleaning up some inconsistencies. But really, all we're asking you tonight is, do you want to add back in Class A licenses and reinstate that? That's all you're doing tonight.
Thank you, Miranda.
So is there-
Is there any downside to this?
So the reason that Class As were limited in the first place was because it takes away housing stock. It could, it could potentially take away long-term housing stock. And so that's why there was such a really short window where you had to already have an ADU, and you had to have already operated as an STR, because the point is to look at a combination of short and long term. So if you open this back up, someone could choose to have an ADU, a detached ADU, and choose to do it short-term rental versus operating it as a long-term rental. So that is one thing to consider and something the board did consider back when this passed in 2020.
Yeah, so in my case, for instance, if I wanted to take what I'm doing for a long term, I could short-term it.
Correct.
And we're talking, it looks like we've identified a sample size. We're talking probably like three cases, right?
Yeah, so currently, we've only been in touch with a handful of people who are interested in detached ADUs. Not saying you wouldn't see more. I mean, I would say Macy's, I don't know how many you've permitted in the last year, but it's, there's a huge uptick in short-term rentals. So you open up a new license type, we're likely gonna see more than just the ones we're talking to.
Okay, and then the restrictions are in here because we don't want to see stuff built specifically to be ADUs?
Right, because currently, you can have an attached ADU as a short-term rental under a primary residence license type. But detached is prohibited and was as of September 2019.
Okay. Is, if you're arguing the other side of this, what would it be? Besides taking long-term rental stock out of market, is there anything else?
Sure, I think that, you know, people are looking at it as an opportunity to bring in additional income. You know, I think it is challenging to live up here. The cost of homes is quite high, and so people are always looking at another opportunity to bring in additional revenue into their home. And so for many, a primary residence is not going to work for them. And so a detached ADU, should they have one or want to build one, is an opportunity for them to generate income.
Got it. Does anybody else have concerns about this?
I-
Go ahead.
I am for this.
Just one second. Are we good with those, with that little thing on?
But-
With the audio?
Yeah.
Okay, never mind.
What's up?
We're fixing audio. Go ahead, Tanya. It sounds like you can-
But I would like to see in the future, near future, some sort of limit cap on the amount of short-term rentals within the housing stock. And that's a number that I don't have in my head. I would like to see what other communities have done with, because I, I am for the idea of having an ADU as an STR if I were a homeowner and had a spot to build one or had one already. But I also want to limit the amount that we can have in this town is, is, as a, that's just what I would like to see in the future. But I am for this particular thing.
Yeah, what we're talking about today is just creating the Class A, and we can keep an eye on the Class A. And if it becomes alarming at any point, we can restrict it somehow going forward, yeah?
Right, and we will be bringing short-term rentals back just kind of as a whole, as a part of that Chapter 6 discussion, in a couple, like a month or two. So that's another opportunity to really look at this. Macy does have some preliminary data we can bring back about how other municipalities handle this in terms of their restrictions. It's usually a combination of day restrictions like we have, but a lot of them do have caps, where you can only have so many of each license type. And Macy, correct me if I'm wrong, I don't think we have any Class As right now.
That's correct.
Okay.
So no Class As within, they've all expired, or they've decided they changed?
They never applied in the first place. So when I was the clerk at the time, there were no Class As. Class B, which is that secondary license, secondary home license, those were very, those were more popular than a Class A. And Class As have really come back on our radar due to new people moving into the community or people who are just looking at what are alternative opportunities for them when it comes to their ADUs between short-term and long-term rentals.
Because I think originally, there was a cap of like 10 or-
We never had a cap.
And not on the Class A, okay.
We've never had a cap on any of them. The cap that became, really, the cap worked because the day restriction impacted how many. So we saw a massive decrease in Class B secondary home licenses, because you can only rent for 45 days a year. So a lot of people sold their homes and left. So we saw, you know, there used to be hundreds and odd short-term rentals, and where are we now, Macy?
Well, I'd have to count the, I, right now, we're at license number 59. Within the past year, I have issued about 20. I have applications for probably eight more on my desk right now. I know five. I have seven on my desk right now. I issued four in the past week. Some of this has to do with the audit, but I received five applications from one single person just the other day. I am being inundated with phone calls from Realtors and people who are looking into property just solely to short-term rents up here. I get, I, my gosh.
I remember, I remember at the last meeting, Tony, who's a Realtor up here, had talked about Gilpin County.
Mindy, we get background when you unmute, so can you just stay muted until public comment?
Public comment is coming.
I keep, so sorry.
No, for sure. I can just mute it.
Okay, thanks, Cindy.
Yes, ma'am.
And he was talking about some regulation that was in Gilpin County about how ADUs had to have X. It was like their own well system or some sort of infrastructure or, you know. And so if we enact this, is there anything that we'd have to abide by in that regard?
I mean, if they're gonna use it as a residence, they're gonna have to hook up to town water and sewer. There's, they can't skip that, so.
But it doesn't have to have its own designated-
The way our current code reads is for a secondary base fee to be charged has to have its own address. And so we do have a lot of situations where there are detached ADUs that don't have their own address. Current ADUs require to be registered. And under that process, we would regulate someone to have a separate address, so separate base fees could be charged. Still all connected to the same tap, but they pay two base fees for the, for both the primary residence and the detached ADU.
Okay, so those, okay, so consequence, those detached have to have their own address. But it's two, same tap, basically same utilities coming off the main host or the main house or whatever. But it's two separate meters, is what you're saying?
It's not, it's not two separate meters. It's just two base fees.
Two base fees, okay. I think, yeah, I've got it.
I thought we got rid of that.
We changed it to where you would be charged a secondary base fee if there was a separate address.
And all ADUs have separate addresses?
All ADUs are required to register under the policies and procedures that were passed a few years ago, which would require a separate address. But that would be for long-term or short-term? I mean, that's not really a short-term.
I mean, it makes sense. It is a separate address if you were getting a package or whatnot.
Yeah, and we do have some protections against like someone just essentially building two properties and making them both STRs, right? So if the accessory unit is licensed for short-term rental, only the accessory unit and not any other dwelling unit on the same property may be licensed or used as a rental, which I think is important, because it does essentially what we're trying to do here, which is give folks who live here a way to stay here, right? By being able to use their property creatively and potentially build an ADU and use it as an STR so that they can get some supplemental income and, you know, stay in town. Or, you know, they lose their job or they retire or something, and there's a new way for them to get some income coming in, or they have a kid or whatever. Like right now, limiting that kind of creativity, I think, is a problem. And then on top of it, we'll have a bunch of ADUs built to code if people do decide to build ADUs that could be used for long-term rentals in the future, depending on how the town moves, right? So if right now, we're kind of disincentivizing people to even build an ADU, I think that's kind of a problem.
Or it's even the folks in between, you know, our seasonal workers, that kind of thing. It still applies to them as well. Not really long-term, not really short-term, but, you know.
Seasonal.
Right, and so I should, you know, short-term is anything over or anything under 30 days. And so we do have a lot of people who are choosing to rent, you know, 45 days at a time. And so they're, they're not considered short-term rentals because of those definitions, who are doing this like more intermediate thing.
Creative, short-term rentals.
Medium-term rentals, which I think I've heard now is actually a thing. Any more clarifying questions on this, so we can move to the public comment?
Could I say anything?
Yeah, Mindy now is your cue. Go ahead.
Okay. No, I did not come here from Wisconsin to try to figure out how to make money, but we have a beautiful place here in this quirky town that I fell in love with. And I want people that go to Eldoro or just want to come for the weekend. I've been here two months, and I love this place. Our Realtor was like, oh, look at this. Look at Boulder. Look at, you know, Golden. Look at this. And I kept, I was like, I am drawn to the Neds. And this is what I love. Like, this is my forever house. I love this place. And if somebody wants to come and stay in the, and if somebody can't afford it, and I will just let them be there for free. But I wanted to have everything like, you know, on the books that this is okay. I love this place. I wake up every morning. I open my windows, and I'm like, oh, my God, the Aspens and the green and everything. I just absolutely love it. So I just want to be able to have that for somebody else that comes to ski in Eldoro, you know, and just enjoy it. That's it. I love this place. This is the quirky town that I thought I would never find, and I found it, and I love it. So that's pretty much all I gotta say. And on top of that, I'm a horticulturist, so anything that I could do to help with trees, forestry, whatever, I want to do that. I want to be a part of this community. And that's, that's what I want. I love this place. It called me, and I got here, and I love it.
Thanks, Mindy.
Wendy Williams.
Wendy, go ahead.
Hi, I'm Wendy Williams from 442 West Forest Street. And I am in support of the point that I think Eric made of, yeah, incentivizing people to make ADUs. These type of small, single units are what the town is lacking. And if people are creating them and they could transfer into something else, that would be great. But the main reason I'm here is to point out what I believe was a great oversight in the initial STR regulations, where the zoning district neighborhood commercial seems to be, have been totally overlooked and is not spoken to in the STR regulations. Neighborhood commercial, I don't know if you all got to read the email that got forwarded to you today, because it was, you know, very last minute. But it's, it's meant exactly for businesses to be run out of homes. And everybody that buys into neighborhood commercial knows that's a thing. In our Netherlands use groups, it actually allows for hotels and motels by special review use in the neighborhood commercial district. So what I'm here to ask is, I would really like the Board of Trustees to consider looking back and doing yet another amendment to the STR policy and considering Class C for neighborhood commercial zoning, because it's literally made for Airbnbs, and we've got several people that are doing it already. And I know everybody is concerned about, you know, putting caps on it. I totally support that as well. But what I see this as is, we have this, we have this zoning district that is defined to accommodate such things. And yet, when the ordinance was passed, this zoning district was just completely forgotten about. And it should be in there as a Class C use by right for short-term rentals. And I'd really like the Board to consider that, especially if you're gonna be talking about this again next month. I just want to throw that on the table and throw it out there for you guys to discuss, because I think it's really important for those of us that do own neighborhood commercial property to, you know, maintain our property rights. I don't think, this isn't because I want to do any short-term rentals, and I don't know of any of my neighbors that want to do any short-term rentals at this time, but it's more about protecting the zoning as it was intended by those who created our zoning code. That this is exactly the type of neighborhood where this type of thing could and should happen. I mean, if you look at the use groups of what can be done by use by special review in neighborhood commercial, there's tons of stuff. We could have medical offices. We could have this. We could have that. So the fact that it wasn't brought up originally, I think, needs to be revisited. And I would like to propose that, you know, the Board really consider making neighborhood commercial use by right for Class C.
Thanks, Wendy. Now the three minutes. Appreciate it. I'll be honest, I look forward to wrapping my head around that more. I had to work all afternoon coaching and saw that email glance at it, but you get to know more. Thanks for your comment. Anyone?
Thank you. Sorry, I muted myself. Thank you. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Who else out there has a comment on this item? All right, hearing none. If you're talking, and I'm talking, that's because we can't hear you. So hit star six. Otherwise, we're gonna go ahead and move on, assuming no one else had public comments. I'll bring it back to the board for final, for discussion and motion.
I'd like to make a motion to approve Ordinance 836 reinstating Class A STR licenses.
I second.
Thank you. Motion and second. Macy?
Trustee Sterling.
Yes.
Trustee Severs.
Yes.
Trustee Mountain.
Yes.
Trustee Kumsizma.
Yes.
Mayor Billy.
Yes.
Trustee Corvalon.
Yes.
And Mayor Protem Mahol.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. Any other business?
Yeah, I think that what Wendy brought up is interesting, and maybe we should put it in the queue as something that we should look at in the future, once we get.
Would that fit in when we look at the STRs altogether? Would that just be a logical tab?
We can bring it back as part of the Chapter 6 discussion.
Which is soon.
Yeah, I believe we have that slated for April.
I have something.
Okay, go ahead.
I would like the BOT to provide some money for some training for me to go learn about trail building and community organizing, specifically around trails in Bentonville, Arkansas in April. And I think I would need a budget of about $1,200 to go for two days to get a training. And maybe we can put that on the agenda for an upcoming meeting to get that approved. If there's general support, I've just taken over the ProSAB liaison, I believe, with Eric's blessing. And you all's work behind the scenes to make that happen. Thank you all. And that'll be a good thing for me to kind of kick off my tenure with the ProSAB with some, some training in that. So that's all.
Thanks. Yeah, we'll definitely.
While we're at it, why don't you run around the table?
Yeah, and I apologize. Couple, you know, I had something very weird and significant happen on Sunday, so I didn't get her, get Mac together to get the liaisons and the consent agenda today, so it will be in two weeks. But thanks. So our liaisons, as they are reassigned or continuing to be assigned, Eric will be with the Youth Advisory Board. Jesse will be with ProSAB. Tom's moving to the Planning Commission. Nicole is with, is staying on with Sustainability Advisory Board and some new and improved liaison appointments we hadn't learned about before with the library. And John Mountain will be our liaison to the Board of Zoning Adjustment. And Tanya will continue to work with the NDDA as a liaison.
And I guess on that note, I do think that perhaps somebody else should be the liaison to the Boulder County Consortium of Cities. So if anyone's interested in that, I'm currently our liaison. I thought Tom might be interested.
I'll take that, because I'm already doing Dr. Cog, and I'm doing a lot of the regional planning stuff.
I just have been unable to make too many meetings. So I think NED needs better representation there, and I was on it for about three years, but then I, it slipped away.
It gave you great enjoyment at one time. Okay, I'll take it.
Awesome. Thanks.
Yes.
I just want to remind everyone, I sent out an invitation today for a ice skating party for the town staff and for the advisory board members and the Board of Trustee members. And there has been a slight change to the invitation. The event will take place on Saturday, February 18th, from 2:30 PM till 5:00 PM.
Is that in the email?
And I am looking for.
Second email. Could you put that on my calendar?
Okay, yeah, I'll send a calendar.
Yeah, that way we can accept.
Okay, that works. That's perfect. That'll be your RSVP, and I'll keep track. And I'll just need to know by next Thursday, please.
Motion to adjourn.
Thanks, Macy. I have one quick clarifying question with, on Jesse's thing. Miranda, Jesse's request for that budget, is that? Are we good to just put it on the agenda, or can you give me a little detail of what you're thinking?
I'd love if we could also send a member of town staff.
Yeah. So when Jesse and I talked a little bit about this, the challenge is you didn't budget a ton for trustee training. And so it would take on the entire budget, and you, you're still short $250 just to send Jesse. And so that's something you need to consider is like, where are you pulling the other funds from? And then if you want to send to other boards, you have, you know, potentially talking to ProSAB about using the Conservation Trust Fund money or the Eldora money. But Jesse, I would recommend, let's bring this to ProSAB, see if they're willing to free up some conservation funds so ProSAB can go with you. And I think this board needs to maybe accept or agree to giving your entire budget to Jesse. Or it all comes out of the Conservation Trust Fund, and you get the green light from ProSAB to use that money.
So it needs to go to ProSAB first?
I think it should. I think let's talk about it, if you're assuming you'll be at the ProSAB meeting. And I think we talk about it there. And if they're willing to free up the Conservation Trust Fund, no, that's the only concern, is like, if you put this all towards Jesse, you all, no one on the board gets to go to any trainings.
I'm not upset about that.
We'll go for that motion in a second that you guys made. Sorry to cut you off.
Motion to adjourn. Second, second.
You made the motion?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. So, Billy?
Yes.
Trustee Mountain? Trustee Corvalon?
Yes.
Trustee Sterling?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Mahol?
Yes.
Trustee Severs?
Yes.
And Trustee Kumsizma?
Yes.
Thank you. The meeting was adjourned at 10:31 PM.
Thanks, everyone. We appreciate it.
Thanks, all.